2012 City Commission Meeting will come to order. Madam City Manager.
Would you please stand and join me in the invocation? Eternal God, today we give thanks for another opportunity to celebrate springtime in Tallahassee. Let our souls be nourished with the peace and the beauty that is bountiful during this time. And while we celebrate these springtime blessings, we also share in the grief that families in our community and in our state are experiencing at this time. Grant comfort and divine wisdom to those families and to their friends and loved ones in our city, in our state, and in our nation. Finally, help us today to always seek your guidance and your will as we strive to serve our citizens. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, some of you may have noticed that we have these iPads on our desk now. We're trying to go paperless, and we're in the transition, and we've done that for most of our senior staff and others. And this is an effort to protect the environment and other things and make us more informed, and it is working pretty well, working very well. Are there any agenda modifications?
Mr. Mayor, we have added to the agenda item 7.1, which is acceptance of the fiscal year 2011 comprehensive annual financial report. Chairman Paul Brown is here from the Audit Committee, and I believe you have already seen all of the other modifications.
All right. Can I have, well, I don't think we have any presentations, announcements, appearances.
Appearances.
We have citizen input?
No, we do have an appearance by the chairman of the Audit Committee, Mr. Paul Brown.
Okay, fine. Come right on up, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, City Commissioners, City Manager, and other distinguished guests. My great opportunity to present the comprehensive annual financial report, what we refer to as the CAFER, to you this afternoon. If I may divert briefly, since being appointed to this committee just a little more than a month ago, I've since had our first meeting on the Audit Committee, at which time we considered the CAFER as presented by the auditing firm of Carr Riggs in Ingram, and along with the city's accounting staff and management and services staff. And, of course, being the first meeting, at the end of that meeting, I was appointed chair. And then, not only that, told afterwards that I had to present this to the mayor and to the commission in three weeks' time, so much for being the first meeting, but I do honor, I am proud to serve in this capacity for my city and for the community, and I really appreciate that. Coming full circle, I used to perform the audit of the city back some 20 years ago for over six years, so I am familiar with the process involved here. Like I mentioned earlier, the Audit Committee met with the firm of Carr Riggs in Ingram, and one of the partners, Mark Jones, presented the CAFER to us, along with the city staff. And we have accepted that report, and I am presenting this report to you this afternoon for acceptance. You will note that the report issued by Carr Riggs in Ingram is an unqualified report or a clean opinion on the financial statements of the city, along with the federal and state grants. There were a couple of comments made regarding the federal financial reporting, which we consider, the Audit Committee considered not major, as did the auditing firm, they were not considered not major, but they are areas for improvement by the city. The Audit Committee reviewed those findings, along with the city's response, and have accepted those responses and actions to be taken. So at this time, Mayor, we are satisfied with the city's, like I said, we're satisfied with the city's response, and we would like now to present that report for you for acceptance.
We have, all of us have received a copy of the report, and I think most of us have been briefed on the report. I think we want to take this opportunity to thank you and the Audit Committee for a great job. We obviously want to thank Sam, Sam McCall, our auditor, for bringing this to us. And again, for, I don't know how many years, as far as I can remember, for a long, long time, we've had a clean audit. And that's because our staff and others believe that we should do the right thing, and we have, especially our county department. Where's Raul? Raul is around here. They take, they make sure that they look at things. There they are, in the back. Come on, stand up, guys. Come on, stand up. We really appreciate what you all are doing, and I want to talk, I want to mention Sam. Sam, stand up, please. Sam McCall is our auditor. He's the one that looks at everything that we do to keep us straight and on the straight and narrow, and if we're doing anything inappropriate, he will tell us, and we'll have to correct it, and we do correct it. And obviously, I want to thank the committee, because you're the outside persons looking in to make sure that what Sam does and what everybody does, make sure that what we're doing right. So we have citizens' input, and it's a very specialized input, so not every citizen can do this, and these are individuals with degrees in accounting, finance, or banking, or something, very specialized, so we know that they are doing the job that we have and we want them to do. So thank you very much. Commissioners, you got any other comments?
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. We accept the audit, all right?
Thank you.
Next item.
We're on item number eight, Mr. Mayor, which is citizen input on agenda items.
Any citizens?
There are none tonight, Mayor.
Huh?
There are none tonight.
All right, next item.
We're on consent.
Erwin Jackson, we do have other speakers, Mayor, but they're scheduled for the public hearing time, so we'll take them at that.
Yeah, at the public hearing?
Yes.
It's the item that has to do with the smart meters. Do you need a number on that? Pardon? 13.2.
13.6 on smart grid.
Smart meters, yeah, smart grids. Erwin Jackson, 1341 Jackson Bluff. Last week, this commission received, reviewed the performance of appointed city staff. Our city manager, city attorney glowed in the praise from Mr. Marx and others, who stated they were outstanding, almost perfect. I think it's important to examine the record. The smart meter program cost the city approximately $50 million. The approval of this contract resulted only after Mr. Marx voted to hire Honeywell in a no-bid contract. Honeywell was to provide the city's smart meters and newly designed thermostats for each home. This equipment would be used on new smart meter appliances and reduce utility bills according to the cost-benefit analysis that was completed by Honeywell. We now learn that the smart thermostats we purchased two years ago have yet to be developed, let alone developed, delivered. Furthermore, the smart appliances to be used on this system are not widely available for purpose purchase. Why hasn't the city sued Honeywell for falling, failing to provide this equipment, and its failure to meet the financial savings it guaranteed? Who would ever agree to such a contract? Maybe it's because Honeywell's lawyers paid Mr. Marx approximately $750,000 over a five-year period. Wherever our city commissioners, the city manager, city attorney, they were simply looking the other way. This reminds me of a business plant, biomass plant, that John Marx supported, being developed in the south side, next to our schools and homes. I know TK Weathero's wife was given a financial interest in the plant. Ex-commissioner Katz was paid legal fees and hired to arrange construction bonds. Even I was asked by the president of this company what it would take for me to remain silent and go away. As you might imagine, my response was not terribly civil. Mr. Mayor, were you offered anything for your support of this biomass plant? Before you respond, remember there are individuals in this town who do know the truth. Last week, we learned that Jim English, city attorney, authorized the hiring of a private investigator firm owned by a career criminal to spy on me.
That has nothing to do with the subject matter today. Stay on the subject matter.
I think it does. The most consistent critic. What city commissioner spoke out against this decision? Who demanded a full investigation? No one.
Well, Mr.
This commission, in summary, I strongly recommend that the city hire an independent legal counsel to sue Honeywell for failure to comply with their legal obligations. Thank you very much.
I have to tell you, some of the issues that he discussed had nothing to do with the topic of which he was, which he came forward with, but having said that, let me say this, and I've said it before.
It's a practice that we're seeing.
Having said that, I will say this. He has a perfect right, and I would defend his right under the Constitution, First Amendment of the Constitution, to speak. That's his right, and I would defend it, and we all up here defend it, but the Constitution does not guarantee what Mr. Jackson said is the truth. Okay? Okay? You have, no, we're through with the, at this point in time. There will be a point in time when we have unengaged speakers, that if you should sign up, you can speak, okay? Please do.
Is it on the agenda? Only if it's on the agenda.
Your name was mentioned?
If it's, was it on an agenda item?
Was it on an agenda item? Okay, please, we will, we will hear you at the appropriate time. Understand, sir. All right, next item.
We're on consent, Mr. Mayor.
Consent.
Move acceptance of consent.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Next item.
The next item, Mr. Mayor, is item number 13.1, discussion and approval to execute primary, secondary, and tertiary contracts for debris removal and ancillary emergency services. Commissioners, the city of Tallahassee, in conjunction with Leon County, recently solicited proposals for disaster debris removal and disposal firms and conducted evaluations of these firms. We did it together, the city and county, in hopes that we would be able to work together on this, thinking that it would be in the best interest of our community in the event of a disaster, to be able to work together on that. Both city and county public works and solid waste services staff participated in the RFP development and the consultant selection process. Given the magnitude and the geographical coverage of storms over the last several years, we actually selected three firms with which to enter into pre-event contracts, and this agenda item is requesting that the commission approve to execute these contracts with three firms, Crowder Gulf Joint Venture Incorporated as the primary contract, Bird Brothers Emergency Services LLC as the secondary contract, and DRC Emergency Services LLC as the third contract for disaster debris removal and disposal services. Gabe Menendez is here to answer any questions you might have on this item.
Any questions?
Is there a reason why they were not recommended in rank order?
They are, in regards to the third, the three that are recommended, a primary, a secondary, and a tertiary, with the primary getting the first.
What happens is if there's a storm, and if it's a big storm, and the first one can't handle all the debris in the big storm, then you go to the second group, and they can handle it, and if there's a really, really big storm, then the first two can handle it, and hopefully, the third, the third one in line will be able to handle it, and that's why.
I apologize, I was looking at primary scores.
Yeah, and typically, we end up using whoever we have on contract, if the storm is of any significance.
That is correct.
We just want to make sure we got people available to clean up after these storms, when they come, okay? Any question, any other questions?
Move acceptance.
Second.
Properly moved to second, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Next item.
The next item is item 13.2, Tallahassee Regional Airport Marketing and Communications Briefing. And commissioners, as part of the city commission's focus on making the Tallahassee Regional Airport an economic catalyst for our community, the airport staff has developed a marketing and communication strategy designed to increase passenger activities, foster community awareness, and attract private investment in our airport. The plan is the outcome of a very robust citizen-based involvement process that included input from local businesses, frequent users of the airport, and even comments from other marketing firms in Tallahassee. We have with us today our airport director, Sunil Harmon, and our assistant director, Marshall Taggart. We've seen this presentation at the staff level and thought that the commission would also enjoy seeing this and giving us some feedback on other things that you think we may need to do in promoting our airport.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, it pleases me very much to be here before you today. We do want to work our way into the marketing plan, but first of all, I want to say, 10 months ago, when we embarked on this plan to right-size the airport, our biggest concern was to stop loss. We had seen month-over-month losses over a period of 73 months, and I'm pleased to report that January, we turned things around, the numbers were up 5.7%, primarily because the airlines started to realize that we were cleaning up the cost issues within our organization. We were becoming more fiscally responsible in terms of managing their costs, and in February, the numbers were up again, 3.2%. So calendar year, we're up 4.35%, and I think while two months doesn't describe a trend, we're certainly in the right trajectory. I'm also pleased to report that in April, the airlines are adding an additional 8% capacity over the 22% capacity that they, that they added in March. So we are seeing this, what we described as a precarious, flat inverted spin, which is a maneuver that you don't even practice when you fly. We're recovering from a very precarious downturn in a very positive way. As I left the airport today, I was told that the US Air flight to DC is bookful, oversold. So that's, that's a very positive trend. We're also finding out from the airlines that they're adding mainline service. In fact, daily, in the month of March, we had three mainline narrowbodies, Airbus A9, 319, with 126 seats at 2:00. We had a Boeing 737-800 at 6:00, and then that Boeing again arrived at night. The Boeing has 160-seat capacity, so these three narrowbodies replaced the 50-seat and 70-seat regional jets. Again, another very positive trend. In terms of budget, we can't be more pleased. We've been able to reduce our budget to a surplus with about $400,000 in savings. Even though we lost 5.7% of our inflaments from fiscal year 10 to fiscal year 11, we were able to increase our revenues by 1%. We recovered about $410,000 in bad debt, and we are also finalizing a new contract with the airline that reemerged from bankruptcy as Gulfstream, which became Silver Express, a US Air affiliate, and they're doing away with their Beech 19 aircraft, which most people are uncomfortable, no lavatory, no flight attendant, to a Saab 340. We're going to roll that out very successfully, that's a 34-seat airplane turboprop, you can stand upright in it, it's got a lavatory, it's got a flight attendant, so all things in the positive direction as far as this United affiliate. And first time in a long time, we have the presence of United at the airport, because United acquired Continental, so we've resigned all the Continental signs to United's signs. With that, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about, before I turn it over to my deputy director, Marshall, the marketing plan has been in the works, as you know, since the last Oktoberfest barbecue event that we held at the airport. That kicked off our plan. We actually had the PBS series come and interview some of you, and that story is going to actually run on public access channels here, the end of March. But this plan has been an all-inclusive plan, we've had tremendous support from the EDC, Beth Kirkland, from the Airport Advisory Committee, we've had membership from the Chamber, as well as Visit Tallahassee. It's been a yeoman effort across the board, the committees worked very hard to articulate a very complex and large plan, you'll see an abbreviated version of that today, but I'd just like to say that it's been approved by the advisory committee, the airlines like it, and I think it's helping us move things along in the right direction. So with that, I'll turn it over to Marshall Taggart. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. As Sunil mentioned, the airport's marketing and communication strategy is really centered around enhancing the passenger experience at our airport. Our goal is to maintain a positive image and also to build customer loyalty at our airport. One of the pieces that you saw when we kicked this off was really the salute for Sunday, March 25th, in which we had our mayor, select individuals from the commission, both Commissioner Gillum and Commissioner Miller, to come out to in turn look for and see the new service that was introduced for US Airways going nonstop to Washington DC. We look at that as a definite component of our air service development strategy long-term, and more importantly, our marketing plan to really convey three phases. The first phase, in this case, is change is in the air, and we say that literally. Change meaning having new planes to take off from Tallahassee and go to nonstop destinations. So that kicked off in terms of the US Airways new service. On Monday, on the 2nd of April, as Sunil mentioned, with Continental and United Airlines merging, we're going to be introducing a new aircraft, it is our Saab Express 340, and United will be doing business as a new component, Silver Airways, as people come through. We're going to have a press release that will in turn convey that to the public, one that there was a change in terms of a carrier, we have another legacy carrier, and also too, with a new branded airplane that will in turn come to Tallahassee. New equipment, new leather interior, so it's nothing like the new airport interior smell, and again, restroom facilities onboard. That means a lot when you talk about intrastate service.
It does.
So as we move forward, when we talk a little bit about the domestic and international airport branding strategies, we have a three-pronged strategy related to changes in the air, and that really centers upon interstate, intrastate, and international service. Definitely for the interstate, we completed Washington DC, we've met with United Airlines to talk with them at their headquarters in Chicago, to talk about a direct flight to Chicago that will open up from Tallahassee, different markets. Chicago has roughly over 132 routes that they fly from a United perspective, so we're looking to in turn target that aspect of flight. In addition, United Airlines going with Houston, Texas, which opens up the west and the Asian markets, very similar to the trip that we know that some of the members of the commission went to for China, well, here's an opportunity to do so. And then Delta Airlines, New York going to LaGuardia, with the slot swap that took place, with slots that opened up Washington DC, well, we also got slots that opened up for New York. So there's a tremendous opportunity, this dovetails into our business plan, and also too, with business travelers from the Chamber, whom we've targeted and also too surveyed, this is what they say they want.
Marshall, New York, the, is that nonstop, or?
These are nonstop flights, Mr. Mayor.
When is that scheduled?
We're looking, we're working directly with Delta to go through, we talked with Delta in December, they are actually watching the US Airways flight. They want to see, basically, as you termed, and I use the term of endearment cheeks and seeks, so in this case, with this aspect of looking at having how this flight works, to see that Tallahassee is a viable market, and we do believe that it is a viable market. Moving to intrastate, meaning inside the state of Florida, really targeting with United Express piece, key destinations, West Palm Beach, going from Tallahassee, from Jacksonville, I'm sorry, to Tallahassee to Pensacola, going from Tallahassee to Tampa to Key West, and in addition, a United Express going nonstop to Orlando. We've identified these aspects and have received tremendous response from United Express for looking at these as viable markets. We're in negotiations, we're in the conversations with these airlines and these carriers to in turn open up new routes from an intrastate perspective, and we do think they're going to be affordable for passengers that are here, or citizens that are here in Tallahassee and the surrounding area. And then the whole piece, as Sunil may have mentioned, is definitely from an international standpoint, looking at how can we make our airport an international port of entry, a true international port of entry. When you look at all the airports that are in the northwest corridor of Florida, we would be the first to become an international port of entry, where there are flights that actually fly internationally from Tallahassee. It's what really Tallahasians deserve, what the capital city deserves, so we're working diligently to get letters of support from various members of the Chamber, throughout the business community, and definitely will be sending that to you and Mr. Mayor and the commission. So that is definitely a strategy. The key routes that we're looking at is for United Express to go from Tallahassee to Fort Lauderdale and go over to the Grand Bahamas, or even go from Tallahassee, Fort Lauderdale, and go over to Cancun, Mexico. Those are the opportunities that we see in terms of proposed air routes for domestic and international airport marketing branding strategies. and international airport marketing branding strategies. As we move forward to the whole Phase Two for branding and a tagline and a loyalty program, going to be very brief in this case, we broke this up into two different areas and really wanted to say to the passengers that we're unveiling a new passenger experience. And that in turn dovetails into two areas. One, a robust commercial development program at our airport, as well as having a highlighting innovations and technology at our airport. On last Monday, Commissioner Ziffer, our mayor, other dignitaries came out to cut the ribbon for our new cellphone lot. It is being used. It is a great amenity for passengers. It's a way to infuse technology into this piece, and we want to do other pieces. I'll give you some highlights when I talk a little bit about innovations. One thing is our new information board. When you come out, it's a touchscreen component where you can in turn get information and get a text that comes back to you about your hotel room when you come to Tallahassee. So, these are for deplaning passengers that are coming into Tallahassee as they touch the screen and put in their phone number. They can receive all that information right on their smartphone.
Wow.
That is very unique, and that is installed at our airport today. Mobile applications, web marketing page launches, working directly with our communications area, QR advertising, which is something that is very big now with static advertising and placing information on your phone, having a component with scanning in through, particularly through one particular carrier, a major carrier here at the airport, Delta Airlines, so you can check into that area.
Wow.
And then all the commercial components that we're looking at, trying to really get a, definitely restore our shoe shine, putting an RPI out on the street for that, a potential Florida lottery location, which Tallahassee is the home in this case, so we're working with the state to try to have a freestanding lottery location at our area, full-service banking with an international component associated with currency exchange. It's going to be needed, and we want you to exchange currency in Tallahassee, not necessarily Atlanta, or Miami, or any other airport that you fly through. Something related to folks, to really reward loyalty for people that fly through our airport, a owner's lounge, something that is branded, that is specific to Tallahassee, that gives a perspective, and we reward loyalty. Where you come into an actual owner's lounge, which will be located post-security, and you can have a quiet, serene experience that provides opportunities for spies, a spy to receive a spy treatment, and also too, to basically have a very pleasant experience, very similar to some of the airport legacy carrier holdrooms in this case. So, conveying the, unveiling a new passenger experience is the second phase. And then the third phase is something we did last year, supporting your hometown airport, having a community awareness event, which is set for October the 6th, where we're looking to have local food and beverage vendors, family fun activities, an aircraft show, aircraft displays, prizes and giveaways, and live music, to let people know that there is an airport in Tallahassee, and we want you to support that airport. With that, my presentation is complete, and again, we really wanted to say on behalf of the, definitely the airport staff, we really appreciate all of the support that we've received from the Commission, and more importantly, also to the Citroen for supporting their hometown airport.
Thank you very much, Mr. Taggart. You kind of covered all the bases that I had questions about.
Okay.
And more, one of the ones I really like is the scanning opportunity.
Sir.
To check in, and the scanning option, I hope Delta does that and hope the other airlines follow. That's really very, very.
They have the equipment, and the goal is to get Delta installed first, within the next 60 days.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
Yeah, I mean, I just want to rise to compliment Sunil and Marshall and the entire team that you all have assembled. The flying out of Tallahassee experience is becoming more and more improved, and that's from, I hear that as people are coming into the airport, people who are, you know, are not necessarily from here. One of the statements that the flight attendant makes when you land is if Tallahassee is not your final destination, we, you know, wish you luck getting to your final destination. Always think, well, who is traveling someplace else out of Tallahassee? And maybe with some of the visions that you've laid out tonight, we actually may have travelers who come here and then divert to other places. I think everything that you have laid out this evening is completely doable and possible, up to and including even international flight services. We are the debatably fourth or third largest state, and we have the state capital of that state. There's no reason why we shouldn't have that kind of exchange. I was in Durham, North Carolina, and was shocked to hear over the loudspeaker them calling for passengers to board the plane to Charles de Gaulle Airport in Paris and to Heathrow Airport in London, but they're flying international flights out of Riley, Durham.
Yes.
And so, there's no reason why we shouldn't also be competing in that market. But I just want to wish you all the very best in continuing the climb to make our airport, quite frankly, a standout far beyond its peers, and I think we're moving rather quickly in that direction under you all and your staff's leadership. And I also want to quickly acknowledge the partnerships that you all have reached out and made with the folks at the Chamber and the EDC, and really underscoring for the community that the only way that these services continue and the only way that they continue to grow is if we utilize this airport. If we stop making the choice to go over to Jacksonville and Panama City and Pensacola and start using the services right here, right here at home, because once you do the math, it's a wash anyway, if you're talking about traveling out of town to catch a cheaper flight. I think we're becoming more competitive there, and I appreciate you all for that work.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Ziffer.
Yeah, I wanted to congratulate you again, and also, Mr. Harmon. I think it's important, people should give Tallahassee a chance, certainly when they're looking for airfares, because they'll be surprised. Someday, sometimes it depends on what day of the week you look, because I think I mentioned before, one of these early Commission meetings, I was able to get to Miami really cheap, and it was only a week or so out. The other thing is I want to thank you and the mayor for building such a strong advisory council. Having had the pleasure of attending several of those meetings, it's a really strong working group, and there's a good representation from the community. I know they're out there talking about us, and they're also bringing back suggestions, which is important because that's what an advisory council does. My advice to anybody out there is don't bet against us. Don't bet against us, because we're coming, and based upon that Washington, the DC flight, that's strong, and those numbers are good, and those other ones will follow soon. So, if you're saying you're not flying out of Tallahassee now, my guess is a year from now, you're going to be singing a different tune. I look forward to that. So, thank both of you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just wanted to add to your comment regarding airfares. We are working to prepare a splash page, a sort of a direct airport website, not to take anything away from the city, but we want to brand the airport uniquely as airports brand themselves, and be able to publicize the specials. Delta recently ran a $140 round trip to Atlanta special. It sold out in about two hours. There are similar specials that are coming with American Airlines. In fact, American just announced round trips to Europe in the $500 range, and those are selling out very fast. But we need this page to get the word out, and the idea is to get it onto your personal devices as soon as the airlines notify us. And we're finding a great deal of support from the airlines to integrate to that site. So, that's one of the larger pieces that Marshall is working with.
Yeah, how can we help speed that up? I mean, that is, you are spot on when you talk about the individual and independent branding for the airport and being able to market directly to people from the airport, not through a COT site.
I think after we presented to Madam Manager our volume of study and our vision, I think she's onboard. The momentum is there. We have your support. It's just a matter of logistics. We're working with a company out of Atlanta to prepare the splash page, which will be a page that you can go on your personal device, on your iPhone or your iPad, and immediately go to Tallahassee Airport and be able to access the locations where the specials are running, and hopefully link it somehow to Twitter and other ways of blasting this information out to the EDC and the Chamber and so on.
Commissioner Musson.
There must be some way we can utilize, once we have that website, utilize our TV station to do something, either crawls or in some way, you know.
Well, US Air is working on a web crawl with us, but I guarantee you, the DC flight will probably go up to a narrowbody in a few months. The Dallas-Fort Worth flight has been so successful that even as it's in bankruptcy, American is looking at a mainline to Dallas-Fort Worth.
Yeah, you told me.
And they're, believe it or not, Americans become our second-largest carrier. They grew 27% this calendar year. They've surpassed US Air as our second-largest carrier.
Commissioner Musson.
Well, I just want to add to the accolades. For both of you, this is what we hoped for and expected when we hired you. So, congratulations and keep up the good work. I've got a couple of questions just that, based on the presentation. One, on the intrastate service, do we have any destinations firm yet, or is that all still to be worked out with United?
We have a tremendous amount of market data to demonstrate that the interstate routes that Marshall mentioned are viable routes. The airlines don't have the equipment at this time. Silver just reemerged as a new company.
Right.
It was bought by a hedge fund. It's a brand-new company. They have an acquisition plan of 12 of these new aircraft, but they're being delivered at one and two per month. So, it's an issue of getting sufficient aircraft. Because of the massive shedding of capacity that the airlines did over the last five to seven years, they're actually having to now reintroduce aircraft into their mix, and that takes a little bit of time. But the benefit here is an inner line with the Orlando flight, there's a significant United presence in Orlando. There isn't such a presence in Fort Lauderdale, or Miami, or Dallas-Fort Worth, or Charlotte. So, this gives them an opportunity to interline those United passengers and then get them quickly up to Chicago and so on. And it really benefits us. You get direct United service from Orlando to LAX, which is another tremendous benefit. So, we're confident that as they get equipment and our consumers demonstrate that they are supporting the airport, that we'll see these new services.
Okay, great. On the international designation, give us a feel for like, what are the timeframe obstacles, likelihood, that sort of thing?
I've done it three times in three South Florida airports. Typically, the timeline is two and a half years to get all the approvals and funding in place, because you end up having to construct a dedicated standalone facility where the INS Customs Immigration Officers actually clear flights. These are sterile aprons and sterile facilities. They behave in the same way that they behave if you arrive at any international airport. They actually will also check the aircraft for contraband and smuggled people and so on. The funding for that sort of prototype facility is about $4 million. We'd expect Homeland Security to share in that cost, but first, we've got to get the designation. And the letters of support have to demonstrate that there is a demand for at least 2,000 corporate private aircraft entries into the airport to make it viable for the Homeland Security, to make that a budget item for them. Requires them to allocate two or three agents. We're so far away from Jacksonville that on a fee basis, it would be impossible, because the stipulation is that when those resources are available. So, if I were arriving from Bahamas or Bermuda and said, I want to clear international in Tallahassee, there'd be no guarantee, even on a fee basis, that those agents would be there. But if we get the designation and construct the facility, you're guaranteed that they'll be there.
Okay. Last thing, the, you know, very pleased to see the changes in the makeup of the advisory board, and particularly to get the folks from the Chambers and the surrounding counties. I hope that works out well and that we have good participation. The one thing that I had mentioned before, and I still think is a good idea, is, you know, we tend to sometimes ignore the South Georgia area in terms of economic development and some of our efforts, and those guys all ought to be using this airport. So, whatever we can do in additional to that would be really good.
I think the intention is to expand to within the one-hour driving range, to the north as well, and pick up those counties. The advisory committee has been a very useful resource for us. The problem is getting a quorum. Many of them work, have businesses, so we might come back to you to reduce the number that comprises a quorum, but otherwise, I found them to be an extremely knowledgeable group that, you know, it benefits us to bounce these things off of them.
Let me ask just one other question, similar to Commissioner Musson's question. I know you used the term catchment area. What is our catchment area, and how does Panama City affect what we're doing?
Panama City is actually outside our catchment area, Mayor. Our catchment area is typically a 90-minute drive to the airport, and that's about 640,000 people, potential travelers. So, our market extends well beyond Leon County, extends beyond Vaquala, and so on. The problem is, as we integrate those people, our marketing campaign has to also extend out there. So, as you see the DC service, we're advertising that across that region. It's a very broad advertising campaign for US Air, and we hope to do that for the other carriers as well.
Does Panama City, how does Panama City affect us? I know a lot of people in our community say, oh, I'm going to drive to Panama City, and all the flights are cheaper. What's the name, what's the, Southwest?
They call, they call themselves the gateway to the beaches. Obviously, it's a seasonal destination. Their load factors are 43%, 47% with Southwest and Delta. Our load factors are 77% to 89%. I mean, it's not a real airport. They constructed a brand-new airport, but you know, I just don't see the market. Once the subsidies run out, I don't really see it as a viable competitor. Jacksonville is a much bigger competitor as far as low-cost service goes, because they've got a concentration of Southwest. They also have other, Allegiant and other low-cost carriers over there. Now, the only way we'll get those carriers is I told the citizens that come to us, we've got to reduce our cost structure to a point where it becomes attractive for low-cost carriers to operate on a continual basis from our airport.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner?
I just wanted to make sure that you got Congressman Sutherland safely to Washington on Sunday afternoon.
We did. And he's been very, very supportive. He actually helped us collect about $204,000 in bad debt from the National Weather Service, so we're very happy that we couldn't collect for years. And once he wrote his letter, they delivered a check in about a week.
Just one more quick question, the status of the master plan?
The master plan's been awarded. It's pending legal sufficiency. We've already negotiated a contract, both for the terminal master plan, as well as the economic commercial master plan for the non-aeronautical uses. We've negotiated and awarded both of those.
So, when do you anticipate having some information back to us? Six months, eight months, three months?
As soon as the legal sufficiency is done, we kick off. You'll probably have the results of those studies in about five months. But we'll bring those to you on an ongoing basis so that you're aware of progress.
I don't think there's much more we can say, but thank you for the hard work, you and Marshall, and it's working, and this is the kind of service that we need in the city of Tallahassee, and it's the kind of service that makes us the community that we are and where we want to be. Thank you so much. All right. Next item.
The next item is Item 13.3, Discussion of Amendment Request to Add Truck and Trailer Rental as a Permitted Principal Use in the Central Urban 45 Zoning District. And Commissioners, this item involves a request for the Commission to initiate a text amendment to the Central Urban 45 Zoning District. The requested amendment from several business entities would allow truck and trailer rental facilities throughout the Central Urban 45 District unless adjacent to a school. On February 7th and March 6th, the Planning Commission reviewed the request and voted 5 to 0 to recommend to the City Commission not to initiate the amendment. The Planning Department has also reviewed this and concurs with the Planning Commission on this item. You may note that the discussion related to this item and the materials that you've received also considered proposed development restrictions, and Roxanne Manning will talk to you a little bit about those as part of her discussion on this item. Roxanne.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Roxanne Manning with the Planning Department. I'd like to give you a very quick overview of the request and the anticipated impacts of the request, as well as the Planning Department recommendation and the Planning Commission recommendation. This is not a rezoning. This is a request for a text amendment, and when you revise a zoning district text, you make that applicable throughout the entire district, and this is the CU-45 district. I'd like to start off by saying, we do have in town many, many places, and this is the area highlighted in red, that do allow the trailer and truck rentals, such as U-Haul or Budget, as a primary use and an accessory use. Those are grouped both in close to the university and out by the suburbs in very highly trafficked areas. There are activity center zoning, commercial parkway zoning, and industrial zoning. That's consistent with how other cities handle it. You try to put those uses out in an area where the people who are going to use them can actually find them quickly.
Is there any, go back. I'm just, this is just. Is there any reason why that line is down the middle?
I'm sorry. Oh, it's two different pictures. It was so large to try and make it visible, and we had to cut it in half.
Oh, okay. I was confused. Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, we're trying to show the whole area.
I got you.
Okay, so this is. Okay, so this is a request to mend CU-45. And the parcel that sort of was the initiator of this request is located on Lake Bradford Road. And you can see right down here, it's right in this area. We've colored CU-45 in purple. And just a quick overview of where they're located, you have most of the Lake Bradford Road corridor going from Gaines down to Orange. That's adjacent to some RP-1 and RP-2 residential preservation, including the Providence neighborhood. Lake Bradford Road was designated as a gateway road by the City Commission. The CU-45 district is intended to improve the commercial uses in that area over time into something that's intense, but well-designed and compatible with the surrounding areas. You have more CU-45, and these are all the sort of bluish-purple squares on the north side, adjacent to Frenchtown Downtown. The gateway road in that area is Tennessee Street. And then you have Midtown and Adams. Both of these areas are covered in our placemaking initiatives. And the purple areas, which are quite extensive, are also CU-45 along Monroe and Thomasville Road, and Adams Street as well. These are some shots of Lake Bradford Road to sort of show you what the facilities can look like, and what some of the facilities along that roadway look like. The business model for Budget for U-Haul entails putting the vehicles, both the trucks and the trailers, in a very highly-visible place. And there's nothing wrong with that. That's very good, because it really does catch people's eye, and it works. But you know, staff and the Planning Commission feel that it works well in the right district. We did look at the existing land uses on Lake Bradford Road. And one of the concerns was, there are a lot of uses on Lake Bradford Road that are automobile-based. Now, some of those uses are legal, non-conforming uses. They've been there a very long time. The goal with a district like this is, over time, to allow those districts to live their useful life productively, but change over time into something that's consistent with the policies that were put in the comp plan and zoning code. So the red area here are the legal non-conformities. And I do want to point out, some of these are, you know, the city sewer plant and things like that. So that's why they look so large. There actually weren't that many. The Planning Commission took two meetings and really discussed this issue. After the first meeting on February 7th, they directed staff to go back and look again to see if there were ways that we could make this work. They suggested some things that we might want to try and regulate. For example, the number of axles per acre, you know, how do you screen the trucks and things like that. We talked to other cities all over the country and in Florida. We picked cities that were as much like Tallahassee as we could. But we also looked at larger cities and smaller to see if we might find something that would work. We found several things. For example, we found that the screening of the trucks and the trailers is inconsistent. It's incompatible with the business model that the rental facilities want to use, and that really wouldn't work for them. We also found from code enforcement, from growth management departments in other cities and our own, that regulating these is very difficult, because you're having to regulate something that has wheels. So what we heard over and over again is, yes, you know, we'll tell them, they have to park these in the back, or the side, or behind the bushes. And they'll move them out front, and as soon as they get a citation or a notice of violation, they move them back. And it's just sort of this ongoing thing. So what the cities are trying to do, for the most part, is either have permanent screening or not allow them in districts where they don't work. And that's sort of the story that we got from most of the cities. After going back to the Planning Commission, and they discussed it again, we did have about six people come and speak against it from the adjacent neighborhood. There were also some people in the audience who were in opposition to the proposal. We did have a 30-name petition that was submitted also in opposition to a rezoning on the parcel. So should you choose to initiate a rezoning, which is one of the options that we'll give you tonight, I want you to be aware that there's already a petition that's been put together by the adjacent homeowners, and you know what their concerns are. But the Planning Commission recommended not to initiate the text amendment. If you do not initiate it, it dies here. If you do initiate the text amendment, it depends on the form that you initiated in as to what happens next. And I'll go over that when we give you the options. The findings from the Planning Commission were that truck and trailer rental facilities were not consistent with the CU-45 district intent. They were not compatible with nearby residential protection zoning districts, and were not appropriate in CU-45 due to the placemaking initiatives, and the gateway designations, and you know, the front porch communities, and all the things that are going on in those areas. They also found that due to the mobile nature of the trucks and trailers, that it was impossible or extremely difficult to do successful enforcement on those sites. And that CP, Commercial Parkway, Activity Center, and Industrial Zoning Districts throughout town provide sufficient locations, very good locations, for these types of uses. Some of those are on Capital Circle. And also, they felt the finding was that the feelings and opinions of the Lake Bradford Road neighbors who testified against the text amendment should be respected and honored. And those are their findings. Now, we took this to the Long Range Target Issue Committee yesterday, and there was a significant amount of discussion. And based on that discussion, we've added an additional option to your list. We want to try and, you know, give you all of the options, so that you can make the selection you're most comfortable with. And I'll add, that's option number four. So the first option, and the recommendation, is not to initiate the text amendment. The second option is to initiate an amendment that would allow truck and trailer rentals as an allowable use with appropriate development restrictions. And I want to remind you that MMTD regulations do apply in this area. So that would mean that they would have to move the trucks and trailers to the back of the building, or to the side of the building, and they'd have to screen them there. So those would apply. Another option is to initiate, and option three, initiate amendment to the Land Development Code to allow truck and trailer rentals with the only restriction that was accepted by the applicant, which is a distance from schools. I believe it's 250 feet. We'd have to remove the MMTD protections if you go with option three. And then option four, which is the new one, is to initiate a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezoning that would go on that area. That would allow staff to look at not just the little subject parcel, which would be incredibly difficult to do a comp plan amendment on, but we could look at the entire area and come up with perhaps a reasonable proposal for that. We would also recommend, if you do that, if you initiate a comprehensive plan amendment, that we would have to remove the MMTD designation from that area. And also, perhaps, the gateway designation from that part of Lake Bradford Road. But that is an option. Again, I do want to remind you, though, there's already a citizen's petition out there in opposition to a rezoning. And then the fifth option is to provide us other direction. So I'm here to answer any questions and await your direction.
Commissioners, you got any questions? I've looked at this, we've all looked at this, and I'm trying to determine who wants this, besides the applicant. And that's, I don't see anybody that thinks this is a good idea. What is the current status of that parcel now? Is it in compliance?
No. The parcel was cited for creating an illegal use. And they went to code enforcement. They were found in violation and given, I believe, 30 days to cease and desist on the use. And so this application was basically a result of that code enforcement process.
And the applicant continues... Well, I won't say anything else. Anybody else got any questions?
I'll move option one.
Second.
We got a motion and a second on option one. Any other discussion?
I just wanted to add that this is an ancillary use, and they have a primary use. This particular thing is what got them into trouble with code enforcement. But it is an ancillary use. They have other business activities on the property that are in compliance.
Correct. They are consistent. It's a tire, you know, tire installation, and that's a legal use in that district.
Commissioner Musson.
Well, we struggled with this yesterday. And I'm somewhat sympathetic to the applicant. I was explaining to the group yesterday, my office, law office, sits across the street from a gas station on Mahan Drive, that for a while, and maybe illegally, as I'm looking at the map, had U-Hauls for rent there. And it never bothered me that much. But so I'm kind of torn between, you know, if we allow this here, then it has to go everywhere in the CU-45 district, which is, you know, not necessarily a good thing. And if we pull it out of the CU-45 district, which is option four, I guess, then, I mean, this is the area, Providence is right behind here, that we've spent big ton of money trying to get improved and kind of end the CU-45 deal. So I would be maybe inclined to do option two, but I'll see what everybody else's thoughts are here.
Commissioner?
Yeah, I'm going to support the motion, frankly, in part because we have spent so much money. And the Providence neighborhood is one that has been fighting tooth and nail to stay vibrant, to stay a recognized neighborhood, where the city will continue to make investments in them, where they're still raising families, still young children in the area, even though there is a college student element that's a part of that community. It has an established neighborhood association. In fact, we just did a neighborhood cleanup over there just a few days ago. And so I do think if we are in the business of trying to help that area transition, the money we're spending there on Famu Way, and whatever new alignment results on Famu Way, the money on Gaines Street, I really would like to see that part of Lake Bradford be able to benefit from some of the significant investments, roadway investments, that are being made. And moreover, I really do get sick of seeing some of these really unattractive uses overcrowding and overloading certain streets in certain parts of the city. And so, you know, for those reasons, with all due respect to the applicant and the gentleman who owns it, maybe there is another more appropriate neighborhood or street that they can relocate this truck rental business to.
Well, you know, we just got through with a presentation by the airport. And one of the things that we've always wanted to do is have a gateway from the airport to downtown. And this is one of the avenues, or one of the corridors that we were thinking about. And if we support this thing, I think we're taking a step backwards with regards to that opportunity. And I just threw that. We're trying to enhance this area. And the Providence neighborhood has been mentioned. It's right across the street from Pineview Elementary, and it's on the south side. And I'm not willing to continue to burden the south side with these kinds of activities. And that's what it does. And it's not necessary, because there's so many other places that this can go and do. So for those, and the fact of the matter is that if we do it, it permeates all over the city and the county. Not a good idea at all. So for that reason, I cannot, I can only vote for option one. We got a motion and a second on option one. All in favor of the option one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously.
Now, I'll vote against you, Mayor.
Okay, it passes 4 to 1. Commissioner Musson voting against it. Next item.
The next item is item number 13.4, Solid Waste Services Update. And Commissioners, as you know, the city solid waste services provides garbage, trash, and recycling services to residential and commercial customers. Several key and fairly long-term solid waste services agreements for collection and disposal services are scheduled to expire over the next several months. And in light of this, staff is here today to provide an overview of the current contracts and to offer some options for your consideration related to potential changes to the way that the city currently collects and disposes of its solid waste. Some of you have been here, I think some of you were here the last time we negotiated some of these contracts. But as I said, they are fairly long-term, so I think it's important for the Commission to give us some feedback on how you would like to see us proceed in the future. And Reese Code is here to make that presentation.
Thank you, Madam Manager, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. We'll be brief. We do have, as the manager mentioned, some key agreements that involve the three primary functional areas of the solid waste department. We do serve about 52,000 customers within the city limits, and the primary functions that we provide with our solid waste department are recycling, the collection of the waste itself, and then ultimately, the disposal of the waste. And we have key contracts involving each one of those areas that expire over the next 20 months, some as early as September of this year. So I'll go down those one by one, talk about what the next steps would be, and give a general overview of those contracts. The first contract that will expire is the recycling contract with Recycled Fibers. They take all of our recycling collections that we get from, most of us would know it via the Smart Cart. So that two-bend cart that we put out with our garbage cans, and you separate the paper, and you separate the other recyclables, that actually is collected. We collect about 10,000 to 11,000 tons of that material each year, and to deliver it to Recycled Fibers. They then sort it, sell it into the wholesale market. We actually have a revenue stream that comes from that. Over the last five to, or five years or so, we've received 360, around 360,000 to almost a million dollars from that actual revenue stream. So it is a very positive revenue stream that comes back that helps support the operation. And we'd like to grow that, of course. One way we believe we can grow that, and our consultant has advised us, is to move to what's called single-stream recycling. So I mentioned that today, you sort the paper from the other hard recyclables, and the bin requires a divider. If we can make that process a little bit easier, essentially instruct our customers, hey, just throw it in the recycling container, and we'll take care of the rest. We've seen, or we've been advised, that other areas of the country pretty consistently have seen increases of about 30% in recycling. So that does two things for us. Clearly, it does more than two things. It helps the environment. I think we're all in favor of that. But it increases our revenue stream that we otherwise get from recycling, as well as reduces our expense that is related to disposal. And I'll get to that in a moment. So we're looking at that contract very much with the mindset of moving to single-stream. We've talked to our vendor, Recycled Fibers, about potentially extending the contract, if they can facilitate that. At this moment, they're not so inclined to do that. And our next steps would involve probably a RFP, potentially, for those folks that may be interested in doing that service. It's very much a regional service, as you might imagine. You can't truck these goods over long distances and remain profitable in the recycling business. So that's one of the agreements we have in play.
Reese, I want to ask you just something real quick on that. Do we know kind of what percentage of our recyclable waste is currently recycled?
It's all recycled, to the best of our knowledge.
To the potential that is out there.
Yeah, I mean, like, you know, of the, you know, if everybody put every piece of paper and, you know, bottle it versus what we have actually recycled, do we know that? And I understand, it's supposed to be better with single, you know, tracks. So do we know about, you know, do we move from 40 to 50%? Or what, just roughly? And you can get back to me. I don't have to know it right now.
I think I'll have to get back to you. I think there's a few numbers. It's participation, so how many customers participate? And then what's the potential?
Right.
And that potential could be measured in weight or sheer volume, which obviously recyclable materials don't weigh very much. So we'll get back with that answer. Yes, sir. Moving along, the next contract that would be set to expire is the collection contract with Waste Pro. That similarly is on a September 2012, excuse me, September 2012 timeline. That involves our vendor, Waste Pro. They provide residential garbage, trash, bulk services, as well as the recycling collection from all of our residential customers throughout town. For the garbage, the trash, and the bulk, they provide half of our customer service. The other half is provided by our own city staff resources. That's been the case for many, many years. Prior to Waste Pro, Waste Management provided that function. And as that contract nears expiration, we are working with them. We have a three-year, the ability to extend that contract three years, if we can agree to terms. We think, based on the conditions today, that we may actually be able to drive... We think based on the conditions today that we may actually be able to drive the price of that agreement down. We think we can get some improvements in our recycling service, again, coming back to our recycling goal of trying to do more, trying to increase that revenue stream, at the same time trying to drive down our disposal cost stream. So we're working that together. While it has no contractual relationship with our recycling contract, we believe there to be a considerable synergy among the two. So we're working on that as we speak. Hopefully, we can reach some form of an agreement and either extend the contract or go out for a competitive bid very, very soon. We don't want to wait till the last minute on that. And finally, disposal, Leon County Solid Waste provides the Leon County Transfer Station on Gum Road, which, which I'm sure you're familiar with. And garbage that's collected throughout Leon County is actually delivered there, collected, and then transported to Jackson County for disposal in a waste management landfill. We have an agreement with them, it was an interlocal agreement that we signed in 2003 that had an initial term of 10 years, with the ability to continue that agreement or end it. It really was part of a more comprehensive approach involving lots of services that related to the city, and not only the transfer station, but the primary impetus of the agreement was to make sure the construction of the transfer station, which was in the best interest of Leon County and the City of Tallahassee at the time, was viable and had a life expectancy beyond a couple of years. We signed that agreement, that is, at the end of its term, it served its purpose. Last year, for example, we delivered 121,000 tons of material that were gathered at the transfer station and then trucked to Jackson County for disposal. That was at a rate of $42 a ton. Since that agreement has been in place, and really recently, we've learned that there are new options available to us today that were not available at the time. Those options will be available to Leon County as well, that may be closer. I think there's a big premium on reducing the trucking miles that we send our waste, and frankly, much cheaper. So we've been talking with Leon County staff. The city manager recently sent a letter to the county administrator discussing the issue, encouraging cooperation between staffs, and they both agree, the county administrator and city manager, that discussions have been going well, but we wanted to bring your attention to that as we move forward with the process. In fact, we intend to issue probably an RFI, a request for interest, to learn what options are available out there. Are they close by? Are they viable? Do they meet our standards? And can they save the City of Tallahassee and Leon County money? So we've combined those together, again, I'll make the point that these contracts are not contractually interrelated, but they have so much in common, their expiration is so close and near in terms of when each expires, that we believe it makes sense to evaluate each and every one of them together as we talk to the vendors and we work with our party, counterpart, Leon County. We have engaged the services of Kessler Consulting, they're the premier consultant in the state of Florida and around southeast as it relates to solid waste matters. We expect a report from them in June. I believe that report is deliverable to give us more insight, what the potentials are, and actually act on our behalf. So we'll be bringing you more information, but we wanted to share this with you before we got too far down the road, seek your input. Again, the contracts expire in the next 20 months, as early as seven months, so we're not on the eve of having to make a decision, but we've begun work and wanted to seek your input on this matter.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Miller?
I have a question. Well, first of all, I wanted to know when you, if you do go the single-stream method, will you, will a bin site, we won't have to go to these little green bins like they use in the county, will we? We'll have something bigger than that.
I have to confess, I don't know the answer, but I am certain we will not go to those green bins they use in the county.
Well, they're just too small, I think.
Yes, ma'am.
For me. The other thing that I wanted to know, as you know, I've expressed my interest in recycling rates, and that the recycling rates go up significantly. Have you all done any data collection among the public to find out what it would take to get them to be more, what kind of service would help them to recycle more?
If I could go back to the earlier question, it would be the same bin. We can modify the same bin, I was just told, so I want to answer that while I'm here. I don't know that we have any information from Tallahassee. We've asked our consultant to begin gathering that information from other areas where they've experimented. So they've had, you know, our method of collection, as they go to single-stream, the different containers, the different services. Frankly, we've talked about incentives, and in fact, so, the ability to determine whether or not a customer participates in recycling, so in other words, that your can out actually provide recycling, and how can we reward you from doing that, or for doing that. And so, so we're trying to learn from the experiences of others around the country. I certainly believe we would also engage our customers before we formulated a program.
Okay. Well, I want to thank you for a really good write-up. I mean, you took a pretty complicated situation and simplified it nicely, and it was very clean and concise, and I appreciated that.
Any other comments?
On the recycling, can you speak to it? I know at one point we were hearing from some of our business customers that they were having some challenges in some of the large residential apartment complexes when it came to getting recycling bins. Have we cured that? Are we looking at any changes with regard to recycling for major commercial uses or apartment complexes in this next deal?
Commissioner, I can give you a basic answer, and we can get more information for you. We know each one of those cases is difficult, and they're individual. And Reginald O'Flanny and his staff in the solid waste department actually have assigned a recycling coordinator that visits individually, and we're making a concerted effort to remedy that, and we're doing it on an individual basis. There was, there's no silver bullet, in other words, space is a constraint for some, just willingness to do it's an issue for others, and so we're working on that, and we can certainly get you a more comprehensive answer to.
But the policy right now of our growth management department is to supply recycling at all of these locations, commercial and high residential, or not?
Yes, sir. Beginning in June, the state law provides that any new entity would have to have a recycling, a place for a recycling container. On the overall commercial recycling program, I think it's a combination of things, placement and so forth, and I think to a certain extent, probably, we have not done as good a job in marketing the program. We have some folks assigned to it, that visit folks. So part of the scope of work that we have assigned our consultant is to evaluate our program, and see, again, learn from what other folks are doing that are doing, getting better results than we are, and let us know, what can we do, you know, to make it more palatable for folks to participate? When Reese was talking about some incentive programs, technology obviously brings us closer to doing a lot of, a lot of cool things. And one of the things is this GPS technology allows you to identify who is participating on the residential side, even on the commercial side, and how much, if you want to invest, how much they're, they're participating, and then you could develop incentive programs that say, if, if Ms. Thompson participates every week, then she gets a gift card to her place of choice, and these kind of things. So those are all the marketing incentive programs that they're looking at, but overall, they're looking at, what do we do, what other folks do, what are the best practices, and then we'll put those in place with your approval.
And then, in general, with, with regard to how we approach this next iteration of a contract, you know, I would be interested in anything that sort of takes out the middle person, if we could, because to me, it would seem like we could get a better price, that we could reduce the number of miles, road miles traveled, that, you know, it meets a number of this commission's goals, to save costs, to have some consideration for the environment and the use of sort of these heavy vehicles on the road going longer distances, if there are shorter and cheaper, faster ways in which we can get this stuff to dumping rounds.
Sir, we will. And just as a point of clarification, I know there were a lot of dates and numbers. Reese talked about the Waste Pro contract expiring on September 30, 2012, is actually September 30, 2013, but that's a 20-month window.
Okay, well, we got to begin now, taking a look at all these things. I want to thank you all again, this is a comprehensive idea, I think we need to move forward as indicated, and we're doing some really good things here in our city, so thank you all. Next item.
The next item, we're going to call Reese back up again, Commissioner, is to talk about the Good Neighbor Program that we created about four years ago to assist our utility customers in greatest need. Specifically, the program provides assistance to income-qualified seniors, income-qualified families with children under five, and disabled persons living independently. We put the program in place with a sunset date, and it actually comes to fruition at the end of this month, and this item is requesting that we extend the program for an additional year. Did I leave anything out, Reese? Can you talk a little bit about the success of the program?
Yes, ma'am, certainly. Being on the customer service end of the business, it, the benefits of it are very clear. So we, we talk to many, many, many of our customers, oftentimes, we're talking to customers that have really no way to make ends meet, and they have a true need, and as the manager mentioned, this program was put in place very late 2008, so it's been in place for just over three years. It was, it was put in place by way of some non-recurring revenue, so it wasn't something that we budgeted, it was from some refunds that we had received, it was, in other words, revenues that we didn't expect to get. We've been able to make good use of that, and we've helped over 2,600 customers. They're all qualified, the program's administered through the Community Action Agency, and they do that at no cost. They charge us no fee to do it, they do it as part of their other programs, so we have a good administrator that's qualifying customers, and frankly, it's a very good tool to have in the toolbox as we work with customers, we identify need to connect them with those services. So we, the good news was, I guess, is, over the last year, we didn't spend as much money as we thought we were going to spend, so we were here this time last year, we, and the commission extended the program for a year. We thought we were going to need a lot more money, we didn't, so that's, that's a good sign. And we have enough funding available from that approval, frankly, to continue the program with your approval tonight.
I'll move the item, Mayor.
Second. Properly moved and second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Next item.
The next item is item number 13.6, which is an update on the Smart Grid program. Commissioners, in April of 2008, we adopted and initiated the Smart Grid project. The goal of the project is to provide customer, more, customers more choices, to help them be more informed, and also more engaged about their electric, water, and gas usage, to allow them opportunities to reduce their utility usage and their utility costs. The project is going very well, and staff is here today to provide an update, and also to talk about the progress we've made to date in the development of new customer programs associated with the Smart Grid. And one more time, we have Reese making this presentation.
Reese Code Show.
Thank you, Madam Manager.
Reese Code Show.
This one will take a little bit longer, I'll try to move as fast as I can, there's a lot of material here. Fundamentally, the project, when we began it back in 2008, the commission provided approval, and we moved forward, we began installing infrastructure in April of 2008. It was, it is in fact, an infrastructure modernization project, so that's some kind of techie words, but that's really what we're talking about. We have enhanced our infrastructure in order to provide benefits to our customers and create operating savings. The stated result, or the stated expectation at the time was to create operating savings, enhance customer value, and support the city's DSM goals. And the DSM plan, as you know, is really designed to conserve energy and delay the need for new generating capacity in its simplest form. So, so three main goals to do those things, and we have made progress in all of that regard. I'll just take a moment to talk about the public policy. Prior to our, moving forward with the Smart Grid in Tallahassee, there was discussion about the public policy at the federal level, it was included in the Energy Policy Act of 2005. There was follow-on discussion in the Energy Independent Security Act of 2007, and since we began the project last summer, the White House issued a report entitled "The Policy Framework for the 21st Century Grid," really encouraging utilities in the nation to get behind this because of the benefits they believe it holds. So there's been considerable discussion at the national level in, in folks moving forward. So around Florida, this was, this was interesting to me as I gathered the information, because, you know, we kind of live it, we dove into this, and we started our project, and we really don't pay attention to what others are doing when you're immersed in the project itself. But around Florida, 3.8 million of the 9.5 million electric meters have already been upgraded to smart grid-enabled devices, to essentially modernize the grid that exists in Florida, and by 2013, 6 million of the nine and a half million meters will have been changed. I feel pretty certain about that number, because the 6 million comes from the projects that are underway, not just those that have been discussed. And around the nation, I've got a picture that I was able to get from a website that shows activity around the nation, and you have companies such as Pacific Gas and Electric and Southern California Edison in California, that represent the majority of meters in California, and they're well underway, nearing completion. I mentioned the companies in Florida, you have company Oklahoma Gas and Electric in Oklahoma, and so in the middle part of our country. Pepco, which is in the mid-Atlantic, representing millions of customers, doing it, as well as Southern Company, that represents the majority of customers in Alabama, Georgia, Mississippi, and in fact, in the western panhandle of Florida. So, so we see a real intense move to this grid modernization that we've referred to as Smart Grid. We've evolved that from Smart Meters. You see a lot of activity out there. This is the caption of the nation, it's happening around the world as well. The program overview that I'd like to discuss tonight involves the customer programs, so I mentioned earlier that an expected outcome was enhanced customer value. I think we've made good progress in that regard, as well as a discussion about the infrastructure. Now, frankly, most of the infrastructure's been in place for many years now, and then the software systems development, so that, that soft piece that makes the, the engine go, if you will, and actually captures information and makes the grid intelligent. So the customer programs, it's about really what's in it for me, customer loyalty, satisfaction, and ultimately, I like to use the term value. I've got a list, I won't, I won't go through the entire list, but I'd like to share with you some of the programs we've been able to achieve by way of the Smart Grid, and I'd like to draw emphasis to some of the programs that we've, we've actually done that really aren't because of the meters. And in my opinion, we shouldn't get wrapped up with the meters themselves and what the meter does for you, but really, how it changes the dynamics of the utility system, how it changes the dynamics of how we share information with customers and interact with customers, because frankly, that's really what is evolving, how you communicate the information you have and the relationship and the expectations of the customer. And, and so we have that kind of at place. Just as a side note, we, over the last couple of years, we've been interacting with our customers by way of email, text messages, and other electronic instant-type messaging methods, and we've sent, I think it was in the last year, we've sent over 800,000 messages targeted to customers that are relevant to them. So it may be that you're a natural gas customer, and I send information to you relative to natural gas, that not, that's not necessarily facilitated by the meters, but it's brought about by the mindset that I'm communicating with you, and I've given you relevant information, actionable information. And so we've started doing that. One of our, one of our successes are E+ Online application, this is a tool that's available online today to our customers. In fact, we have 25,000 of our customers registered, so it's, it's far more than a handful, and they're taking advantage of information such as, in this case, you'll see on the left side of the slide, how much electricity you've used in the last seven or eight days, I believe I see, and that actually tells you when you used it. So in the green, it says you've used it in off-peak, in the red, it tells you you used it in the peak, so it gives you some idea of how you're doing. So in this case, this customer's a nights and weekends customer, this is actual customer data, and then at a glance, you can tell how you did for the same month last year, and you can vary by service type, electric, gas, and water. You can view your bill, this ties into our Smart Bill program, how much you owe, when it's due, those kind of things. You can even see how much you used by types. Now, this, this is based on some, some pretty intense analytics, it's not exact, I don't know how much you use in cooking, but based on the series of questions you answer about what kind of stove you have, your habits, how many people live in the house, it makes a very good estimate about how you're using electricity, which helps you identify ways to save energy and water.
Reese?
Yes, sir.
How do you get that information?
This, this is actual information.
How do you get it? How do you receive it?
You go to the web, E+ Online, via tau.gov.com, you log in, create a username, a login password, and this information's available to you. And so each time you log in, it's here, it's up to date, it has...
How did it get from the customer to us? Because we've got to, we've got to get it from the customer to us before we can do that, before you can get it to the customer.
Excellent question. Thank you for the question, Mr. Mayor. In fact, I'm going to jump to one that actually details that. So, so part of this is actually bill-to-date information. So, so when most of us think about the, the monthly billing cycle, and you get the bill, and you don't know what the bill's going to be, and you get it, and that's what it is, and you really had no idea in between, that the Smart Grid infrastructure allows us to capture that information during the course of the month. So every day, we get information that says, you know... So, every day, we get information that says, you know, another 10 units were used of water, gas, electric, whatever the case might be. And we can actually take that, we can feed it into this website, and we can share it with you and you know it much faster than you knew it before. And in fact, you can take action on that. It will facilitate other programs that I'll get to in a moment. In this case, it shows that seven days into the billing cycle, the usage cycle, the customer with electric, gas, water, sewer, so on and so forth, services has used $35 worth of utility service. So, that helps you pace yourself. That helps you understand how you're doing. And that has been a phenomenal tool for some of our customers that are highly engaged in the process. They make changes during the course of the month. They don't want to wait to the end of the month. They want to know in between. That information's available today and we have 25,000 customers taking advantage of that. To other programs we're working on, Nights and Weekends program, you guys are very familiar with that. It's set for a public hearing tonight to take public input to make it permanent. That program is facilitated by way of the Smart Grid because it's able to capture, if you use your electricity on-peak and off-peak, and actually give you an incentive to use electricity off-peak. We've seen great results with that program. I think the customers like it better than I like it, frankly. I love it, but the feedback that I get from customers is phenomenal because they're engaged, they have an option, and they have the ability to save based on their actions. And I've been very, very pleased personally with that program. A program that we're working on development, and I want to leave you with this impression, is as we have this grid in place and we have the information at our disposal and we have tools that can break the cycle of what we experienced in the past of a meter reader going out and reading the meter and a manual person managing it on and off, we can do programs like pay-as-you-go pricing. And that's as simple as it sounds. You pay me however much you want to pay, when you want to pay it, and you take complete control of the situation. If you want to turn the services on in the middle of the night, turn it on in the middle of the night by the web. You don't even have to talk to anybody. I mean, in simple form, it would kind of be like pay at the pump for gas. You pull up to the gas pump, you do the transaction, you get your gas and you leave, and it's at your complete convenience. We've got a lot of positive feedback from our customers. We're working with a class at FSU in the School of Communications, and they're actually giving us some feedback. We believe the 18- to 24-year-old segment of our population will be very, very interested segment of the population. And this really mirrors what we're trying to achieve is matching programs and plans with customers' lifestyles. We have to have the Smart Grid in place to be able to do programs like that.
Reese, will you ever be able to pay for that? I appreciate... And I missed a bit. I was distracted a little bit. With the credit card? In other words, will there ever be a device in somebody's house where they can swipe a credit card and they'll put in how much electricity they want to use for a month and it counts down? And then, when you get to a certain point, it buzzer goes off or something?
My best guess is you're not going to swipe it in the house, but you'll go online and punch the credit card information in. So, it will take advantage of modern infrastructure, smartphones, apps, things of this nature. In fact, you'll be alerted by text messages. One of the vendors we're talking to has an app. It really will leverage those things that are common to customers today in the web and internet and other devices.
But my concern, of course, with that is the underserved and unserved communities that may not have access to the web, may not have access to a computer. But this information would be extremely valuable to them in a simplified form. And even the picture you put up there where you can show what each appliances you're using, I can't remember which one was that, that's something that, you know, I hope we can develop or hope somebody develops, that we can make it as simple as we possibly can and put it in somebody's house, that they can see it. Right now, they've got to go to the web. I know that Comcast is putting together something where you can see this stuff on your TV, and they may have that as well. But that may even be web-based as far... But it may come over the... That may not be web-based and that may be some way we can do that too because everybody's got a TV, you know? But I would like for us to look at some of those options with this Smart Grid because this technology is moving fast and we need to do that.
And I appreciate your comments on that. That's exactly what we're doing. And we're trying to make sure we do it smartly. So, as the Smart Grid develops and you saw the activity around the country, so there's pressure on vendors that, in the past, we'd have considered them consumer vendors. So, we're in the utility business. We typically build wires and plants and sell electricity and water and things of that nature. We typically aren't in customers' homes. Frankly, I don't believe we're interested in being in customer homes. But the consumer device industry, the makers of TVs and other small electronics, they're coming to the market slower than what we'd expect it to be, but there's considerable potential because of the millions of endpoints that are out there now. And we're wanting to make sure that we take advantage of that development, that we don't do it on our own, and we do it with not a one-off solution, but a commercial solution that we can repeat and that our customers can take advantage of. And we've exercised considerable effort in that regard. And we definitely agree that probably extends our services to a broader base of customers, really with the objective of touching all of our customers. Yes, sir. And finally, I would like to talk about, I won't go through all of these. I know time is getting short. A distribution automation project that we're working on. Yes, ma'am?
Can I ask you something before you leave these programs? You know, I have the monitoring device in our house as a pilot, and I would like to know when that's going to be available to everybody. Because everybody that comes in the house and sees it is fascinated and wants one.
Everyone likes that one.
Everybody does.
What Commissioner Miller is speaking of is a pilot. We have a few hundred endpoints that are deployed in various forms that actually communicate with the meter. They tell you how much you're using at the moment, how much you used during the month. That one probably will never see the light of day.
(laughing)
Except at your house.
I'm taking my monitor.
Frankly...
Is that why you didn't offer it to me? Because I'd love to see that.
It does have some shortcomings. I may be hypersensitive to it, but it does not... It only communicates with the meter and it can't communicate upstream. So, as I change prices and I... And so, we've been waiting on that vendor to develop that next version of that product to say, hey, you know, there's some things that we know our customers need to have. So, for example, in that device, what's relevant to a customer is what the price is today, not what that device may have had inputted into it two years ago that's no longer fresh. And so, we've been working through that and I know that seems subtle, but we want to make sure we've got a good product. And that's why we've been testing these devices as we move forward. We want to make sure we have that good product in place. But it is pretty cool.
Well, I think...
And you can see the vision when you see the product.
The most valuable part of it is that you know when it changes, you start looking around the house and saying, what's on? And it may be that you left something on too long. It may be that you learned that your coffee maker actually burns quite a bit of electricity and it doesn't need to be on all the time. And I think that has been the biggest help for us. I mean, I haven't tried to monitor exactly what our bill is at any given time, so it has other benefits. I hope you can... I hope you keep looking around for that kind of thing for people because I do think that they would get a benefit out of it.
Thank you. Finally, I'm going to end with the customer piece and then move along. The distribution automation, this is not a meter-enabled program. This is something that we started, that we're well underway with. I think it's pretty neat and it's symbolic of the Smart Grid effort. What that involves is some automatic switches that work within the distribution line. So, the distribution lines work very much like the circuitry in your home. If there's a fault, if there's a reason why it's either drawing too much electricity, the wire's corrupted, whatever it might be, the circuit breaker in your home trips to allow, actually, to protect the home. Our system works exactly the same way. So, if a tree falls on the line, the circuit trips and it will segment that area of the distribution system and then somebody has to go out and repair it. Oftentimes, you can actually reduce the size of the outage by switching. Today, that happens manually. So, it takes a crew to go out in the field, identify visually where that fault's occurred. They do some segmenting and switching to restore as many customers as they can. And then, somebody's working on the wire at the same time, which that outage takes a longer period of time. This kind of distribution automation actually has the intelligence built in to where it senses where the fault is. We're installing some of these today and it's going to really shorten the outage period for our customers. And again, we talked so much about the metering as being the Smart Grid, but the Smart Grid extends well beyond that. This would be on the distribution system and I think it'll bring about better service. So, I wanted to mention that. And I'm going to spend a minute on the infrastructure. I mentioned earlier that largely, the infrastructure's been deployed. The plan was to upgrade about 225,000 electric, water, and gas meters. The electric meters were changed out in total. There's a radio onboard that facilitates the communication. There's a backhaul network where the radios talk to. The electric meters serve essentially as the backbone to the system. The water and gas meters were equipped with radio modules, so they essentially extract the reading that would have otherwise occurred. So, the metrology wasn't changed, but there was an additional radio added so that it could broadcast that information, be captured, provide the customers with the information that we've thought we could provide them with. The electric and water pieces were largely completed at the end of 2009. So, again, that's been some time now, so we've got the benefit of that. The gas meter portion, as we've reported before, we got into it, we put some in place. The radios weren't as reliable as we had hoped and frankly, as we'd demand, and so we stopped. Elster is the meter company. I know it's mentioned many, many times at Honeywell. It's actually, Elster is a global company. They manufacture meters. Honeywell doesn't manufacture meters. We've bought these devices from them. We've been working with them. And they literally redesigned the gas radio module. We're piloting. We've got 2,000 of them out there now. We wanted to make sure we were very, very certain of the reliability we expected. We expect to move forward with that very, very soon. During the course of this, we realized that the water radio was failing at a rate higher than we wanted it to. So, it's been out there since 2009, worked fine, reported at a rate that we expected it to, and then began to fall off. So, we spent over the last several months working on that issue to say, you know, what's the issue? What's the remedy? And how's this taken care of at no cost to the city of Tallahassee? And the good news is we have a contract that protects us very well. So, we were working through the final details, Elster, to their credit, have stepped up and said, we're going to cover this. Not only are we going to recover it, we're going to replace as many as we need to replace and we're going to give you an extended warranty for another 15 years, which is far more than you would ever get to begin with, to demonstrate their confidence in the newest device. So, that's where we stand with that today. So, we'll be doing that work over the next six or eight months. It won't compromise any customer programs, but it will involve some field work that's at no cost to the city that'll be done completely by Elster, the metering manufacturer. Software systems, we are near completion with that. The most significant piece of it was the E+ Online piece from the customer's point of view. But the back-room system that handles all the billions of records, as you might imagine, it's an unbelievable amount of records that we capture now. We've got to store it, we've got to analyze it, we've got to make it useful for the customers. That's in place, that's operating well, and we've got some final deliverables that we would do that primarily involve back-room functions. I'd like to end with, we've gotten a lot of positive feedback. We survey our customers. I believe I mentioned that to you before. We survey them to determine how well we're doing, how they receive our service, do they find value in our service. In our most recent survey that we got back a couple of weeks ago, 86% of our customers, which is a very high number historically, we've been trending upward from about 80. So, we're very pleased with that, find value, they believe the service they're getting is good or excellent. Now, that involves all utility services. It's asked that generically. It's not asked about electric or gas or water. How are we doing as a utility provider? So, we attribute that largely to the programs we've been able to offer and the progress we've been able to make and the level of communication we've been able to have with our customers, which gives us a lot of comfort that we're trending in the right direction. The program seems to be enabling us to do that. Again, one of the original expected deliverables of the program was enhanced customer value. So, we believe we're making good headway in that regard.
Thank you. Thank you. I mean, that's a very comprehensive update. And just to think, I believe this all started with the idea we wanted to let the customer, when I discussed with you several years ago, wanted to see if we can find a way a customer can read their own bill within, or read their own meter within their house. And it certainly has, you know, from that discussion, it certainly has much room into something much larger and better than I envisioned initially. So, I want to thank you all. I want to thank the staff for what they have done in terms of addressing this. There's one piece of it that I have to say, that the reason I ask about the swipe card is because of our student population. We have, what, 70,000 students here? And I wanted to see if we can... And they live in apartments all around this community and they don't have any way to control, nor does the landlord, for that matter, to control their usage. And this would allow the landlords to really control their usage or the individual student to control their usage because students don't use electricity the same way that everybody else does. And that's the whole point of this thing. The whole point is to enhance customer choices. And I'd like to see some, if it makes any sense, we have something that looks like, acts like a student rate for our 70,000 students. And so, that the landlords who provide apartments for those students can... Actually, they can market that to the students of what they're doing in those places. So, that's the reason why I think it's important to make this stuff available in-house and give as much information as possible. But anyway, I'll stop at that. Anybody else? Any comments?
Just briefly, Mayor. I appreciate you guys doing this because this is what we wanted. And I wanted to kind of take a, you know, dispassionate look at this several years on. My take is this is somewhere between the travesty that some people would claim the whole effort is and the glowing state of wonder that some of us would like to say it is. The, you know, the real goals of it, benefits to our customers thus far have been modest, I think. DSM impact thus far modest. And technology hasn't moved as fast as we thought it would. So, that's not to say that it was an incorrect decision, but I think the onus is kind of on us to, and particularly the commercial and institutional piece. I mean, those guys really could benefit from some of this stuff, I think. And that's the piece, I guess, that's coming, you know, kind of coming next. But I think the, you know, I think we need to continue to challenge ourselves, you know, in this to, you know, what are the real benefits to, you know, not just some customers, but And on the DSM part, and you know, Mike, and tell me if I'm wrong on this, I mean, we had kind of, the reason we did this at the time we did it was we were in a whole discussion about, you know, capacity and we're really trying to not have to build another power plant. And so, this was going to be a major part of that effort. And kind of, I think serendipitously, you know, the economy in this case went down and we haven't had the, you know, the pressure on that side of it. And the benefit we thought we would get here, we hadn't quite gotten that. So, it sort of canceled out a little bit, at least in my mind. So, I mean, I think we're still probably on the right track of doing this, but it's just, if I had it to do all over again in hindsight, I would have been a little slower and a little less out front, I think.
Commissioner?
The best analogy I can give is when our gas prices went very high about three years ago, we had a whole lot of people trade in their cars for smaller cars because they were all of a sudden very concerned about their fuel usage. And over the last few years, quite frankly, because natural gas prices have gone down, so have our utility bills. And so, I think, and that's very good because we want to pass some of those savings to our customers. But as a result of that, I'm not sure people, even though the economy also had some effect here, but they're not as concerned, but, and I hope this doesn't happen, but if and when our energy cost, natural gas, goes up, I think people will then gravitate towards going online, getting your meter, and being able to follow a little more closely. And at that point, they'll be glad they have this and we won't have to be playing catch-up. This seems to me to be a long-term investment for our customers. This is going to take a little bit of time. I would rather be ahead of it than behind it because I know that if we were behind it, our customers would be asking us, why didn't you do it later? So, I do agree with Commissioner Muschin in that it's probably not the panacea that was intended when it was voted on a few years ago, but I'm glad that it was done by my that it was done by my predecessors, and I'm glad we're continuing it. I look forward to more options for our customers. I would love to get whatever that next thermostat is, because I'd like to see my usage. But I want to thank you for your presentation and continuing to do things like this. But at some point, I think we do have to analyze where are we on those cost savings and what the investment was, but I think it was the right thing to do.
Commissioner?
Yeah, I appreciate the update as well. Our utility has been on the front end, I think, of a lot of innovation. And part of being on the front end of that innovation is when everything else is not where you need it to be, you kind of end up waiting for some of that stuff to catch up before we can actualize all of the benefit. But I do remember very vividly talking about the need for a new power plant come 2014, 2016, and those discussions feeling pretty imminent for this commission to make. And the fact that we're not there today, I'm not hearing anything with regard to the need for us to build a new power plant, tells me that we have had some, a pretty high degree of success, be it the economy, be it customer behavior changes, be it the innovation in the many areas that we have here, nights and weekends, controlling load, so on and so forth. And to me, I have to consider that a win, because when we think about the amount of money we were talking about needing to pay for a new power plant, I would much prefer to go this route of innovation and efficiency on behalf of our customers than, you know, doing the same old thing again and again and again. On the, sort of, request around sort of getting even more innovative with regards to folks paying at home and that sort of thing, I would sort of take the slow approach there. I mean, I think there are so many ways in which people are able to pay their bills short of having a swipe machine in the house. I think if there's energy to be spent, I would put it on mobile devices where people can actually make payments, choices, and requires no hardware on our part, simply just the development of an application. I think from that standpoint, that's probably the direction that we want to go. But there's no doubt about it that we're out there. There's no doubt about it that we've achieved some of the gains that we wanted to. In some cases, not as fast as we'd like it to, but I think that's in part due to us having gotten out there so far, that we are now waiting on industry in some places, this commercialized industry, to catch up with where it is that we are. And the last point I'll make is, you know, the nights and weekends is the next thing that we're about to consider on the agenda, and I'm really interested in seeing what staff has in store to take this model, commercial, to some of our larger commercial customers. I recognize it doesn't work the same way, because we're talking about, you know, evening and early, early morning usage hours. But I am wondering, sort of, what rate structure exists out there for our major utility users during those daytime hours who don't have the luxury of pulling back to a 7:00 AM to 7, you know, a 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM kind of schedule?
We'll be happy to share that with you. Commissioner?
Any other comments? We're going to be in recess until 6 o'clock, public hearings. We're going to try and rush this as much as we possibly can. Hopefully, we can be back to conduct those public hearings.
So we're gonna move forward as quickly as possible. Mr. City Manager, I mean, City Attorney, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are here for public hearings this evening. We have a number of public hearings. The first one, Item 16.1, is the second and final public hearing on the extension of the Tallahassee Community College Campus Development Agreement.
Any speakers?
We have two speakers available for questions, otherwise no speakers.
Any questions?
I'll move the item, Mayor.
Second.
Promptly moved in a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Okay, next item.
Next item, Item 16.2, is the first and only public hearing on Ordinance 12Z13. Its proposed amendments to the official zoning map changing from urban residential R4 to medium-density MR1 zoning district. It is here for action this evening.
Any speakers?
Single speaker, again, available for questions, but not necessary to speak.
Any questions?
None, move acceptance.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously.
Item 16.3 is the first and only public hearing on Ordinance 12015. This is an ordinance amending the land development code, amending the land development code to extend the site plan and certain development permit expiration dates. Mr. Mayor, this was something Commissioner Gillum brought up about a month ago to, given these economic times, for people that had gotten these permits, had invested time and money to be able to continue to move forward with subsequent phases of their development. And appreciate Commissioner Gillum raising that issue so these projects could continue to go forward.
There are no speakers. No speakers?
Move acceptance.
Promptly moved in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Next item.
Next item is Item 16.4, public hearing on Ordinance Number 12016, which establishes a permanent optional residential electric time-of-use rate schedule. This is the nights and weekends rate issue that you previously discussed. It is here for public hearing.
There are no speakers.
Questions? None. We've already heard a lot about this. We got a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Promptly moved in a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously.
And your last public hearing is Item 16.5, which is a voluntary public hearing on transportation alternatives for the West Tennessee Street Corridor. And I believe you may have some speakers in your presentation.
We do have speakers. Presentation first is at the...
Yes, let's hear the speakers. Oh, we're gonna... I don't think we... We don't need a presentation, do we?
I don't think so.
No. Let's hear the speakers.
First speaker is Marilyn Wills, to be followed by Curtis Baines. I'll ask the speakers to provide your name and address for the record and let you know that you have three minutes for your remarks, and the light will turn from green to yellow with 30 seconds left.
Good evening, my name is Marilyn Wills. I live at 2326 Kill Kenny Drive West. I am Vice President of the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee. Speaking for the Tallahassee League, I would like to thank all the city commissioners and Mayor Marks for meeting with us over the past few months regarding the West Tennessee Street Project and moving Tallahassee Plan. We would also like to thank Megan Doherty of the Leon County Planning Department, Harry Reed, and Jack Custrava of the Capital Region Transportation Planning Authority, Gabriel Menendez, and Steve Schaefer of the City of Tallahassee Public Works Department, and Samuel Shibe of Star Metro for meeting with us and being so generous with their time. After much information gathering and study, the Tallahassee League will be supporting these projects. Over 50 people have been hit by cars on West Tennessee Street, some killed. The four-foot sidewalk is too shallow, and traffic in the outside lane is too close to pedestrians. Using the outside lane for bus traffic and access to businesses will reduce the number of speeding vehicles close to the sidewalk. We agree with the CRTPA that our major concern should be moving people, not moving cars. We are concerned for the safety of pedestrians. West Tennessee Street will never be the fast route through Tallahassee it once was, and residents will just have to face that reality. The current lane configuration is dangerous to pedestrians and must be changed. We need to solve this problem, and doing nothing will not lead to a solution. The restriping project is a test. Tennessee Street is scheduled for resurfacing in 2014. Now's the time to try the restriping and see what the issues are. Although there are concerns about DOT approval, the League supports the city taking the planned action to carry out the pilot project. The objective is to find out if this plan will work, and we can't reach that objective if we don't try the pilot. We urge you to try the planned changes. Don't wait for more conversations with DOT, and don't continue to delay the process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Curtis Baines, who will be followed by Hans Van Tol.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Curtis Baines, 1323 East Tennessee Street. I spoke at the first hearing on this regarding, well, continued question about pedestrian safety, which had been raised a couple of weeks before that and spoken to quite extensively, but I wasn't real sure how this plan was going to address pedestrian safety. I understand there have been 182 pedestrian accidents over the past decade or so, and if you look at the plan, you know, it doesn't really say how those pedestrians were injured, but if it were trying to reduce the speed next to the sidewalk, the presumption is, well, either people walked out into the street while they were walking along the sidewalk, or vehicles jumped the curb and hit pedestrians. I'm not real sure which of those happened, or how frequently that happened, so I was concerned about how this is going to improve pedestrian safety. But after I spoke at the meeting two weeks ago, I was able to hear a few other speakers, and one of the things that came up was the bus system and how we're going to improve the bus system in order to accommodate what you're trying to do. I think a few months ago, the issue came up as to how much is this going to cost us to get us there? I haven't seen anything more on that, so I don't think that, you know, the lane stripping is really gonna help pedestrian safety unless there's something I may have missed, I didn't get that out of the agenda items. And then also, at what point will we have some better idea or understanding of how much this transportation system is gonna cost? Because that's what we're putting a lot of emphasis on with constrained corridors, unable to widen roads. We're going to have to have some other kind of mass transit system, and there are a lot of issues involved with that. I would imagine one of them is compactness, the other is density. All of those, we don't have here, so what is it that we're going to need in order to get that system the way we're trying to? I think we're still waiting on that answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hans Van Tol, followed by Karen Loewy.
Okay. That's fine. That's fine.
Good evening. So my name is Hans Van Tol, and I live at 1215 Buckingham Drive. I'm speaking for the Capital City cyclists, who were in favor of this pilot project when it first came before the committee about two years ago, when it was discussed then, and who today are still in favor of this project. For cyclists, the priority element of moving Tallahassee forward is actually the bike route network for the mobility district and beyond. We see Tennessee Street mostly as a pedestrian safety project, but because cyclist safety has been used as a primary argument against the project, we would like to make a few remarks. So the absence of fast-moving cars in the right lane would make the situation much better for cyclists as compared to the current situation. The bike lane would function much like a typical bike lane, but better because of its larger width. And perhaps it's best to quote from a report from Richard Nassi, who is the Transportation Administrator in the city of Tucson, Arizona. "The priority transit lane striping worked as expected, and the reoccurring crashes fell to low levels. The lanes have now been in operation citywide for approximately 22 years. The mixing of various transit and bicycle modes has not proven to be a problem." In other words, buses and bikes can mix. Not doing this Tennessee Street pilot project would be a missed opportunity for the city, and especially for the businesses along this corridor. Cycling is a fast-growing mode of transportation because of its financial and health benefits. And as I said earlier, for this fast-growing bicycle community, it's the bicycle network that is the most important component of the Tallahassee Moving Forward Plan, and we are accused by the growing consensus of making that happen.
That you do.
And for example, Call Street is part of a primary bike route that we identified that connects Tom Brown Park and FSU, and through FSU to High Street and student housing in the northwest. Enhancements of the bicycle corridor, especially around the FSU campus, would be really great. So we would like to thank the city staff, the commissioners, and the mayor for helping to move Tallahassee forward with their support for Tallahassee moving forward, which is a necessity for preserving and also enhancing the livability and bikeability of Tallahassee in the future. And we especially would like to thank the city staff for their hard work, and look forward to continue to working with them and the universities in establishing a bicycle network in Tallahassee. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Karen Loewy, or She Says What He Said. And the next speaker will be Maida Williams.
Hi, y'all. Sorry for the sunglasses. My real glasses are left in the car. So, Maida Williams, 635 West Tennessee Street. I'll go blind so you can see my eyes. Celebrating 30 years of being at that address with Target Copy, and I just want to make sure that common sense is the rule of the day, and really, the businesses on Tennessee Street are not really for this pilot project. We all want safety to be part of the process. I don't think we're done here. I think the conversation should go on. It shouldn't be as long as we took on Blairstone, of course, but, you know, we can slow down the traffic, we can make it safer, we can actually make it prettier if we get rid of the poles, but that takes a lot of money to go underground utilities. So, anywho, let's just look at the common sense option that Doug Manheimer has done such a great job with his community committee to come up with suggestions, and I just hope that you guys would see it that way. Okay, bye.
And congratulations on the birth of your grandbaby.
Oh, thanks. We're happy, y'all.
The next speaker is Adam Anthony Biblo.
A handout from the planning department. Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Adam Anthony Biblo. I live at 1316 Lehigh Drive in Tallahassee, and the last public hearing you had on this, there was a lot of contention, and a lot of people spoke against your efforts to retrofit Tennessee Street. I understand that, and I understand those that wish to retrofit it. I would support your retrofitting, but I would urge this: If you find that there's a lot of pushback on your efforts, I want to tell you, if they're not warmly received there, and that's gonna be a street dominated by autos, so be it. We have other streets in the multimodal district, principally Magnolia, South Adams, and South Monroe, they're in the multimodal district. We've got a lot of people who live in the district, about 30,000, and I would suggest within another mile of the district, another 30,000 or more, that would benefit by you turning your attention to Magnolia, South Adams, South Monroe, some of these streets, and making those multimodal corridors that would safely accommodate pedestrians, transit users, and bicyclists. Sometimes, you know, I've learned through my planning career that it's just too hard to push against those that resist. You have limited resources. Where are those resources best spent? Who wants these projects? So I'm gonna leave you with that, and I think you understand where I'm coming from. I do support what you're trying to do on Tennessee Street, but pragmatically, if the pushback's too great, we would love to have these kind of improvements on the south side and on the east side. Thank you very much.
Next.
Speaker is Doug Manheimer.
Thank you.
He'll be followed by Marie Claire Lehman.
Thank you, Commissioners. I want to be real brief. I also want to thank city staff. There has been a lot of discussion of the lane restrictions, but you also have before you some safety improvements that staff has worked hard on that I think there is widespread and diverse community support for, and those include mid-block crossings, the designation of Call Street as the bike street for the Tennessee Corridor, and also school zone or pedestrian zone flashers to be used at appropriate times and appropriate places along Tennessee Street. If I've seen one thing in this, I have seen, again, widespread support for the community for that. There is widespread and also diverse opposition, as you know, to the lane closures, from FSU, from student government, student senate, FSU administration, from the focus group of citizens who study this with staff, from state employees' union, from the Northeast Business Association, yesterday from Chamber of Commerce, and from the Tennessee Street businesses. So I think there really has been a consensus of community support. I hope that you'll proceed with the safety features here. There is a lot to be done. Mayor Marks, you mentioned, you asked me last week about, you know, we may need to slow down traffic in Tennessee Street. I would tell you I concur. That's at times that the planners and law enforcement determine it's necessary. This amateur thought would be that it may be on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights between 10:30 and 2:00, but that's just, I'm asleep then, but some other people may think that's a good time at some places, and I think we ought to give planning staff and our law enforcement folks the flexibility to do that on Tennessee. Good luck, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Marie Claire Lehman, and then Mark Trafton.
Hi, I'm Marie Claire Lehman, 1911 Wahala Court. I am in support of the project on Tennessee and fully support the position of the Capital City cyclists. I especially support your efforts to create a multimodal district, and I'm here to also express my desire that access and connectivity to that multimodal district be paid a lot of attention, especially for those communities, neighboring communities, who are not necessarily in the multimodal district but very close by and who would really benefit from improved access. really benefit from improved access and connectivity, especially along Magnolia, south of Appalachia, with Cascades Park being built. I think access, safe access for pedestrians and cyclists will really encourage people to use the new grounds. And there is, I'm just taking this opportunity to mention one intersection in particular, Chow Keebin and Magnolia. A lot of kids who go to our local school, Hartsfield, walk or would like to walk, but the crossing guard at that intersection, who essentially stops traffic, is only there for limited hours, and it makes it unsafe to participate in after-school activities and go home alive. So I think that some kind of traffic mechanism for pedestrians at that intersection would be in line with the work being done on the corner of Lafayette and Magnolia currently. And yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next?
Next is Mark Trafton, and that's the final speaker on this topic for which I have a speaker for him.
All right.
Good evening, y'all. It's nice to see you again. I'm Mark Trafton, live at 7769 McLean Road. I'm also the president of the Northeast Business Association. We represent over 160 businesses throughout the entirely on county area. And I'll just say that we have not had one, not one business owner has come to us in support of this, so we don't think the support is out there for this venue. Second point is, the Tennessee Street corridor is probably the most important east-west artery now inside Tallahassee since we've restricted the flow on Pensacola as well as Gaines, so we don't think it's a good idea to do that. And then lastly, it's probably not a good idea to mix buses and bicycles in one lane. And we've talked to you all about that one-on-one before. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker. No? One more?
Correct. No more speakers.
All right. This is an action item, is it not? Or do we take action at this point, or just we hold the hearing and take action at another time when we get some report from the staff? What is it?
This is an action item.
Action item. Okay. Good. Any comments, commissioners? Anybody? Well, I'll comment. This has obviously been a very difficult decision, a contentious decision regarding what to do with Tennessee Street. And I don't know if I can see us evenly divided at this point in time, but obviously there are folks that are for it and against it. After really looking at this and studying this for a while and realizing that this is really a state road, and it's really a federal road, and we were responding to our citizens and students to address this issue, and we have, that's part of our obligation. We have to address it on their behalf. But after hearing what DOT has said, and we've sent two plans to them, and they rejected both of them, and now they're saying, well, we might entertain something else at this point in time. And we don't know whether or not they will accept that one. And DOT's primary obligation, as we all know, as everybody knows, is safety. That's their primary objective, is safety. And so it's just my opinion that this is a matter, since DOT is the final decision-maker, and they are the final decision-maker, no matter what we do. And we would just, and we have expended a lot of our staff time to do what we're supposed to do, and do it. I just think this matter should go directly to DOT. Let them figure out what the plan should be, and let them implement that plan. Because I think we have spent a lot of time, resources, to try and do what we think is right on behalf of our citizens, only to get it rejected by the Florida Department of Transportation. And that does not sit well with me. We have tried. So based on that, I'm going to vote, I will vote not to implement the plan, but to send it to DOT and tell them to give us what they think is appropriate, or to the federal government.
Mayor?
Yes.
I wanted to make two comments, and both of them have to do with unintended consequences. I've said before that it took me some time, but I came to the position where I am opposed to the pilot program, mainly because I'm concerned about unintended consequences as a result of us doing it. But I want to make a comment to our staff, because I think I've created some unintended consequences myself. I want to, and I said this to you personally, I want to thank you, Cherie, because I will tell you, I've seen you enough in a number of presentations where it's been, I don't say hostile crowd, but it's been obviously an audience that has not been in favor of what we've been presenting. And you have handled yourself in a manner that professionalism doesn't even come close to what a great job you've done. And I want to thank you for that, in addition to other staff here at the city of Tallahassee. And as a result of comments I've made, I'm concerned that there are unintended consequences of what I think of you, and you are just wonderful. So thank you very much. That's it, Mayor.
Commissioner?
Well, I wanted to ask you, what is the design speed on this section of road?
I don't know.
The design?
The design speed. Roads are designed to go a certain speed comfortably. And I think it's up there, that's what the speed limit is. But what's the design speed? Because between Woodward and Dewey, I doubt that's a 30 to 35 mile an hour design speed.
Commissioner Miller, at this point, I do not know. That was a road implemented and designed and installed by?
Exactly. I think that what I would like for you all to do is to look at ways to give the impression, there are a lot of methods to give the impression that the road should have a lower speed than maybe it, just the lay of the land is concerned. Those little raised reflectors on the sides, that helps. There are numbers of things. I mean, I know you've been searching your databases everywhere for ways to do this, but I really think that you need to give the impression in every way that this is a more constricted road than it actually is. People can still move along, but by visual, little visual cues, you can change things, I think. Since we are pretty much, I think that staff wants us to, I guess I really want to know what they need from us tonight.
Well, Mayor, while we're, I'd suggest really that we take no action at this point. I mean, as I understand it, the Federal Highway Administration is studying, doing a safety study until they come back with something, I think it's premature for us to do anything. So I'd like to sit.
It is a federal road.
Received that, and really, at some level, it's DOT's and the Federal Highway Administration's to work out. I mean, I think we could, you know, offer some, you know, suggestions, but until they've done their study, I don't, I think it's premature for us to do anything.
I think my sentiments are consistent with that. I mean, this is a federal road. This is something that the federal government and the state government, they have, we have tr, I'm sorry, I said what I wanted to say earlier. Commissioner Gillum.
Yeah. It is a little bit of a frustrating place to be, because I, you know, I fear that a lot of assumptions have been thrown out there, and there is a lot of fear about change. And for the businesses, the fear can be well-placed, because what may be considered our pilot and our tryout could be something more detrimental to their businesses. And so I'm sensitive to that. But I don't think that many of the concerns that I've heard there are really well-founded or well-substantiated, particularly with regard to the point that people will stop visiting, or people will stop coming because traffic will get a little heavier, especially since there are examples all over this country of where, when these decisions have been made, businesses along those corridors have actually grown. People want an exact example. They want Tallahassee 200 miles from here, where the same move was taken on the same stretch of road and the same exact business is making the statement that they were able to survive it. And we can't guarantee or provide that same level of certainty. But that's not to diminish, that's not to diminish their concern. I have said before in this process that, you know, that I'm from Gainesville and am very, very familiar with what it means to have a town or a city that has a major university in it that has the potential for every one of those students in that university environment to drive cars. But because of actions taken by the university, there have been deterrents set up because of the transportation system that exists in those communities that is partly paid for by the local government and partly paid for by the university. There's a neat web system, parking ride system, where folks are parking further away, getting on buses, and they're making it to their destinations in 15- and 10-minute intervals. And that's hugely impressive. And I recognize that we're not all the way there yet in the city of Tallahassee, but we are Florida's capital city, and Tennessee Street is a main, major thoroughfare, but is moreover an entryway, a gateway for Florida State University, particularly in this stretch of the road that we're talking about. And I find it strangely odd and almost deathly that the one place along this highway where we decide to go from four lanes and a controlled speed to a blowout to six lanes and sidewalks that are in some places two feet, three feet, four feet, when the average sidewalk is supposed to be six feet in width. We do all of that, and we do that as we approach the university environment, where we expect the majority of people to be walking, riding, where buses are supposed to be stopping and going, where traffic is supposed to be slower. And so we, I mean, just in my opinion, I think we have it really, really wrong along Tennessee Street. But I am also recognizing that we have heard from the students of Florida State through their official student government arm, the same student government arm that came to us to bring this concern back in 2007. We've heard from the booster community. We understand heard from the official community. We've heard from the businesses along Tennessee. And it's hard to force something amongst all those constituents and say, really, 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 what we're proposing is really going to work out good. That's, you know, it's going to fall on deaf ears. No one's going to believe, is going to believe that. Where I would ideally like to see us go, because at the end of the day, Tennessee Street may not be the city of Tallahassee's road. It runs through a very important integral part of our city. And we ought to have some say about what happens in our city, and we also have, should have some say around how we keep our bikers, riders, pedestrians, drivers, and so on and so forth, safe where they're in, where they're in our reach and within our corridor. And so I think the long-term solution for Tennessee Street really will look different than the way that street looks today. I don't know at this point that we're at a point where we can say what that's going to look like, but I do encourage all of those who have been vocal in this process to remove yourselves and your personal interests from our thinking for a moment, and in the next phase of planning for what Tennessee Street is going to look like. I hope that we'll put our big community visioning hat on and say, when we're tapped out and we can't add any more asphalt to accommodate any more cars, what would we like to see on Tennessee Street that helps us move people? And that means a multitude of functions. That's biking, that's riding, that's walking, that's bus services that are on pretty regular headways, those are sidewalks that are safe to traverse. But we're going to have to get there. And my proposal would be that at some point, this commission, as we step away from the Tennessee Street debate for a moment, assemble a group of folks from our community, and I'm in a wide breadth of our community, not just people who have an interest or business interest along Tennessee Street, because Tennessee Street doesn't belong to the businesses that are along Tennessee Street. It belongs to the entire community. And I think all of us ought to have some input in what that corridor ultimately becomes. And it shouldn't be at the behest of the businesses that are there, because they've made an important investment, and we want them to continue to exist there and to survive and to thrive. But we don't want that to happen at the behest and the detriment of the larger community people-moving vision. And I think the two need to be separated, and at some point, I'd love to make a recommendation around how we do that. I didn't think I would be here, Mayor, but I am somewhere where you and Commissioner Musson are with regard to sort of taking our hands off of the Tennessee Street for the moment, allowing the federal government and the state government, and they're very great and kind people. I met with them today for a really good conversation. They are interested in pedestrian safety and what the state and the federal government can do to make the roadway a safer roadway. I think we want to endorse that. But frankly, at this time, I think we are positioning ourselves to be led by them and what some of those ultimate outcomes are going to be versus trying to drive what those ultimate outcomes are going to be. And I don't think it's a dereliction of our duty, it's us saying, all right, it's not our roadway. We acknowledge that the state secretary has said the bar is so high that we may not be able to reach it. So now the reverse may need to happen, and they should tell us what the appetite is for what will happen along that roadway. Give us an opportunity to respond. And then hopefully, by that time, we will have elevated and cooler heads will have prevailed, and people who are concerned about what year 2035 in the city of Tallahassee and Tennessee Street looks like, and they'll be back at the table to begin to shape some of that conversation. It's not a happy conclusion, but I am thankful for the people who have been involved in the process up to this point. I hope you'll stay involved in the process. And I look forward to us creating an avenue where we can bring a diversity of interest to the table and start having that longer-term discussion around how we move people in our city in the future and not just cars.
Commissioner Miller, we interrupted you right in the middle, and I apologize for that. Were you through?
No, I wasn't, but that's okay. You had answered my first question, and I'm perfectly happy to take my turn, and I'm ready to come back to the table right now. Thank you.
Right ahead, please.
Well, first of all, again, Commissioner Gillum, I know you've really been, you've really been out front on this meeting with DOT, so thank you. And so I encourage you to continue your participation on that effort. What I don't want us to leave here without is talking about some of the other good ideas that have come up. One has been Call Street. And I think we should continue to move ahead and try to work with FSU to get a bike route through FSU, and all of the things that we have talked at the meetings about with the public about what we can do to enhance the bike lanes. And it's a beautiful street. I mean, I had only been on that part, in my mind, it was that part that's right by the library, but I went out and walked it, and it is just so pretty. I mean, it'd be a delight to ride a bike down or even drive down for that matter, and it's plenty wide, there are trees, it's almost a canopy road. I wish that we would continue our efforts and focus on that road to try to bring that to the level of cycle use that we have discussed. That's one thing. I certainly hope we can continue to try to get FSU involved in the conversation. And I would like to know when the DOT report is supposed to be back.
Okay.
Anybody from DOT?
Well, Commissioner Musson.
Gabe may have a answer to this.
You got something? Okay, I'm sorry.
Actually, we do have the DOT representatives here tonight. Do you have an answer for the schedule, when we can anticipate some recommendations? Within 30 days, a month?
Thank you.
Okay. Anything further? Commissioner Musson's suggestion was to postpone any vote on this until the studies by DOT, Department of Transportation, and Federal Department of Transportation. I quite frankly think, I'm not, I would go along with that, but I really think we ought to just go and do it. But I have no problems in postponing the vote on this if that is the desire of this commission.
Oh, I don't think he meant to postpone the vote, did he?
I thought-
Commissioner Musson said, let's defer, let's postpone this until here with DOT and both the federal and the state DOT has got to say about it.
So I would, I'm not sure if I heard it the same way. What I-
Ask Commissioner Musson.
Tell me how you thought you heard it.
Good.
What I was hoping I heard was that we would allow the state to move forward, to continue with their planning process, and that hopefully this commission could step back and assemble a group or a task force or a group to consider sort of the rest of the multimodal district, which is far beyond and far greater than just Tennessee Street, and let us start to plot a path in a committee that starts to move some of those recommendations forward. Again, absent Tennessee Street.
That's what I said.
I second that.
I'm not quite sure what that means. Do we take a vote on this now, or do you postpone it? What do you want to do? You want to wait for DOT, FDOT?
I think we're not doing anything with regard to Tennessee Street. So we are deferring to the state on what they want to do on Tennessee Street. Do you understand?
Yeah, I understand that. Now, I agree with that, but I think we ought to, do we have to formally take a vote on this? Is that sufficient?
You can give us guidance on that, which you have done.
That is the guidance.
Okay. So right now, we're not going forward with the project- So right now, we're not going forward with the project, and we have some guidance that we've given to staff, and we have, DOT is, DOT, both of them are here, I assume, have heard our sentiments. We want to work with DOT, we want to do these things, but this is a, this, again, this is a DOT project, as far as I'm concerned, and we'll wait for guidance from them. That's what you're.
Right, on, on Tennessee Street.
On Tennessee Street.
But I think there's a multimodal plan that is broader than that, that I think all of us have been briefed on, and that we've had virtually no discussion on from this commission because of the Tennessee Street issue. And I think we ought to get back to that part of the plan and, and hopefully yield some real actionable items from, from the larger multimodal. Did you want to speak to that part?
Just very briefly, and that is absolutely what, what, staff is continuing to work on that, and we'll bring it back to you by the end of the year in a much more refined version for the entire district.
And I think one of the thing, layers we, I'm certainly interested in adding on to that is some constituency, various constituency groups, that we would invite to be also a part of that process, because I think what happened here in this case is you all were dutifully doing a lot of work and a lot of research, and then when it came back to, for public appetite, you know, it was a, more of a rush process and few validators were at the table. And I think the earlier on we, we bring citizens into the process, the better.
We will continue the public outreach process and the development of the rest of the plan. We've had good feedback on that so far, and we'll continue to do more before we bring it back.
And so maybe we can get you all's recommended action plan on that back before the commission so that we can give some guidance to that?
Yes.
You're talking about the multimodal thing?
Yeah.
Okay, multimodal.
Happy to.
Are we, as part of what you said, for the staff to continue to work with FDOT in terms of what's happening on Tennessee Street?
They can work with them to the degree they're invited to, but we are stepping back.
We're taking a step back. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, this was a conversation, and I, I think it was in our economic development target issue meeting. The costs associated with some of these improvements that we're talking about in the multimodal area are substantial, I'm assuming. And I guess my point is, it goes back to the blueprint committee that's meeting. I think we need to start to formulate some idea of what some of these costs are, because we may want to include these in whatever list we're going to provide. And I think if we wait till the end of the year to do that, we've missed the boat. And so if, if some figures could be presented to us, even if they're broad in nature, it would be helpful so we could start to have that discussion. I think we're all in agreement, we really want to move people, not cars, and that's going to cost money, and it's not money that we have in our budget. And so probably sales tax dollars would be something that we would look at, so that would be helpful. That's all.
I think it's a good point, and Commissioner, I think in the meantime, we probably, this commission should indicate via letter or some other form that we're interested in the blueprint authorization as part of that, that there be a major infrastructure piece that's not a road infrastructure piece, but a sidewalk infrastructure piece. So even minus any of the details, but that, that be a part of any reauthorization we do, because short of that, we don't have a funded plan, the county didn't have a funded plan, CRTPA thankfully has a million dollars a year that they put towards multimodal bikes and trails, but that's it, there's no incoming money other than that.
I think, I think what Commissioner Ziffer says is, is correct. If we've got some transportation issues that need to be looked at, we need to get that as a part of the discussion for Blueprint 2000 extension of the Celta. We need, we really need to do that, and do that sooner, rather, sooner rather than later.
Mayor, I apologize, I'm going to have to leave early, so if we could go ahead and vote on that.
Call the question.
I didn't think it was a vote necessary, I thought it was just direction to the commission. Well, I'll tell you what, we got a motion and a second. All in favor of the, the idea and the circumstances put forth by Commissioner Gillum, say aye, aye. All opposed? Fine. That settles it.
Before we leave this topic altogether, though, I really, I'm going to bring Call Street up again. I mean, I really hope that people are continuing, we made some significant progress, that's a topic that's on the public's table right now, the university is aware of it, and I don't want to lose that momentum. Okay.
I got a football analogy, but I want to, all right, that's the Lions' public hearing. Where are we?
We're back to item 13.7, Mr. Mayor, which is an update on the public safety complex construction. And commissioners, construction of the new public safety complex on Easterwood Drive commenced following the groundbreaking ceremony that many of you attended in October of 2011. And the project has been progressing now for almost six months. The new facility is designed to encompass all areas of emergency services and will enhance response times and also in turn meet our major goal of saving lives wherever possible. Gabe Menendez is here, he is going to make some introductory remarks and then introduce Carl Morgan, who is the project director, and Carl is going to make a presentation to update you on where the progress is.
Good evening, commissioners. The public safety complex at Easterwood and, and Weems Road near the Red Cross has started construction. If you have been out there, you can see that it's made some significant changes, we're making some advances every day with regards to that. It's to, it's to house the Joint Dispatch, Fire, and EMS Administration as well as the Regional Traffic Management Center, and we're all, we're all looking very anxiously forward to moving in early, early 2013. Here's Carl Morgan, the project.
As Carl comes up, I would like to remind you too, I'm sure your aides have been talking to you about the date that we were trying to put together the tour for the public safety complex, and I believe we've confirmed the date of April 4th for the city commission.
At 4:30.
Fourth, at 4:30. Okay, great.
4:30 at the site.
Looking forward to it. Thank you, Gabe, I appreciate the introduction. Before I start tonight, I would like to take just a moment, if I could, to thank the mayor and the city commissioners for the opportunity to be involved in this project. It's a very meaningful and worthwhile project, it's not often in one's professional career, you have the opportunity to be involved in such a challenging design and construction project, especially one that has the opportunity to do so much for the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Tonight, I'd like to provide the commission with a brief overview of the project, and I know the hour is late, I'll do everything I can to be as brief as possible. Before I begin, Mr. Jay Smith is with me tonight, Vice President of Ajax Construction Company and representing the construction management firm of Ajax CSS, a joint venture. The first slide I have represents the elevation of the, of the building. This was previously presented to the commission, this is the employee entry or the east elevation of the building. The building is constructed out of insulated concrete forms using poured-in-place concrete with a brick veneer skin and structural steel internal frame. This slide, which you have seen before, represents the site plan and development plan for the The main building is to the left of the slide, it includes the Tallahassee Advanced Transportation Management Group, the Emergency Medical Services Administrative Offices, the Emergency Communications Center, or the Joint Dispatch, as Gabe referred to it, the Emergency Operations Center, and administrative offices for the Tallahassee Fire Department. Immediately north of the main building, you will note that there's a, we have provided the infrastructure to provide access and parking to support the bicycle trails in Tom Brown Park that's being developed. To the right, in blue, is the logistics building, which will support the EMS ambulance fleet in conjunction with the Tallahassee Advanced Transportation Management Signal Maintenance Facility. To the extreme right is the future fire station indicated in red on this slide. Within the scope of work of the public safety complex, we've included the access, the parking, utility connections, and infrastructure connections associated with that facility. It's my understanding that the target is to start work on that facility in the first of 2013. This is an aerial photograph of the site, actually taken Monday, so you can begin to see what work is going on on the site. We've completed all the clearing, excuse me, clearing, excavation, and earthwork that's necessary, all of the drainage structures are in place, underground and underslab utilities are complete, foundation work is complete, foundation wall construction is ongoing, the surface parking lot is being prepared, and the base coat of asphalt is in at this point in time. The condensing water wells for the site are being installed, slab backfill is ongoing, wall construction has begun, we're up to, on the main building, up close to the first floor elevation, floor slabs are being installed, and yesterday, we erected the first piece of structural steel on the property. You can see we've done a lot of work, but there's still a lot yet to go. Now, let's take a quick look, if I can, at some other project status information. Of the overall project budget of about $47.5 million, we have encumbered approximately $36.6 million, encumbered or paid at this point in time. These costs include the programming cost, the stormwater facility that's been in place for some time, all of the design costs, the commissioning cost, all of the construction cost, permitting and impact fees in conjunction with the radio and CAD system and the contract with Motorola. Also, we have approximately a $10.9 million number within that of unencumbered funds. This is scheduled to address the IT equipment and cabling component of the project, the visualization and collaboration system, all of the FFNE or furnitures, fixtures, and equipment associated with the project, and also miscellaneous cost and the moving cost. I'll give you a little bit more information a little later in the presentation on those systems. Within the construction contract of $29.9 million, we have, we have a component referred to as a DPO allocation totaling approximately $11 million. This is where staff has been executing direct purchase orders for all the material purchases associated with the project. To date, we've issued close to, a little over $8 billion in DPO items with approximately $3 million remaining in that budget. This is a resultant and overall savings to date of about $500,000. We're anticipating before the completion of the project that that'll reach 2% of the total construction amount. In conjunction, that, we've also saved about $7,400 as a result of an advance payment for the refrigeration equipment associated with the project. At this point in time, I see no reason to, or have no reason to doubt that this project cannot be completed within the available total program funds for the project. Another interesting fact is the local participation component of this. It has always been a target of the commission's to ensure or to create as much local participation in the project as possible. At this point in time, approximately 89% of the total project contract value has been, has gone to local businesses. That represents about $27 million that has been put back into the community as a result of this project. With respect to MBE participation or minority participation, our aspirational targets for the project were 17% MBE and 9% WBE for a total minority participation of 26%. Most, our most recent accounting of that reflects that we have reached 16.3% in MBE participation, 10.4% in WBE participation, for a total participation level of 26.6%. So we have exceeded the overall goal. A lot of hard work has gone into that activity by Ajax and a lot of other people, including the minority offices or the offices of both the city and the, and Tallahassee, or in Leon County. From the standpoint of schedule, we issued the notice to proceed for the project on October 17th, 2011. This equates to a substantial completion date of February 4th, 2013. Our final completion of the project is scheduled to follow that by approximately 20 days, which is March 4th, 2013, with move-in and occupancy hopefully in the summer of 2013. At this point in time, where it's always been a target of the project for LEED certification, our original target was base certification for the project. At this point in time, our counting of the points that are available to us puts us well into the silver category for LEED certification and only a few points away from gold. As the team goes, we will continue to strive to reach that gold target. We have a few opportunities available to us, some in the energy and atmosphere area, including onsite renewable or green power. We also have the opportunity under material resources, regional materials, to potentially achieve another point. Unfortunately, half of the applicable region is in the Gulf of Mexico, so it makes it a little bit difficult to achieve that in Tallahassee. Daylight environmental quality is another, or indoor environmental quality is another overall area that we have the opportunity to pick up a point or so. And the team is, is dedicated to this activity and wants very much to achieve that gold certification, if at all possible. Pending issues associated with the staff and pending actions before both the city and county commission. First is the console acquisition. This is the component of furnishings budget, which will provide the primary interface furnishing between the building, the infrastructure of the building, and the occupants in the Emergency Communications Center, Emergency Operations Center, and the tapas facility. We have developed performance specifications for that component, they have been advertised and responses have been received. This is a very critical component in my mind, and we must look very closely at the ergonomics, comfort, quality, and flexibility and functionality associated with the evaluation. We're currently involved in that evaluation, and I hope very much to bring that back before the commission in early May for approval or action. Secondly, we have developed an RFP for the backbone, or horizontal and backbone cabling associated with the project that has been developed, advertised, and issued. Responses were received March 7th. Support that, that's currently in the early stage of RFP evaluation. We would like very much to get that under contract by the early part of May also. The final issue that we're working on that's in the unencumbered allocation of funds at this point in time is the visualization and collaboration system. A performance spec for that system has been issued, advertised, and responses have been received. Currently, we're in the evaluation phase of that activity. This is a very critical system, and it supply, it supplies all of the visualization activities or visual displays associated with the building. It also provides the ability for anyone working in this building to have instantaneous access to any piece of information existing within the building via a network connection. So I think it, I believe it will be very supportive to assist in decision-making relative to the Emergency Communications Center, Emergency Operations Center, and various other activities associated with the building. In closing and in summary, we are in budget, I see no reason that we cannot complete this when the original 47, or $47.5 million budget is established in April of 2009. We are on schedule for a February substantial completion date for the project. We have secured a significant component of the construction value with local businesses in the Tallahassee and Ford County area. Like I said, this equates to about $27 million in, in value back into the community, and that's relative to the construction contract only, it does not include the other architectural contracts and secondary contracts that we're working on to support the facility. MBE participation, aspirational target of 26%, we have exceeded that and reached 26.7%. And LEED certification, we're currently at LEED silver, well above our original target for the facility. I have one other slide I would like to show you, it's not part of this PowerPoint, if I can make this work. We currently have a webcam available on the site, this has just recently been installed. And in the very near future, we'll be making this available to everybody on the site, or everybody for information. Let me enlarge a component of this so you can see what's going on, it'll allow you to zoom into the, the site, see what work and what activities are going at any point in time. Let my little D-dad go, there it is. Anyway, you're, you can look around on the site, see what's happening at any given point in time. You can see the structural steel that was just erected yesterday, the ICF wall construction that's going up on the main building, and if you need to, you can zoom well into that to see what's happening. Hopefully, we'll have this out to everybody in the very near future for your information. With that, I'm going to close my part of this and ask if anyone has any questions?
Any questions, commissioners? I've seen the presentation before, and I've had, I've seen part of his presentation before, and had a chance to sit down with you, and we went over it, and I was impressed then at what we're doing and what's happening out there, and I remain impressed. And this is certainly going to be a tremendous asset to our community when it's over with. I mean, it's, I saw a safety complex down in Altamont Springs recently, and it's a pretty good one, but this one is just going to be state-of-the-art. And so I think this is the, a very good thing for our community, and you are the person to put it together. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that confidence, sir. I truly believe this facility is going to be a benchmark for emergency service fusion centers for other communities. I think it is. I think it is -- I really believe it is that good. We put a lot of work into it. The team's put a lot of work into it, a lot of aggressive thinking. Contractors doing an excellent job. Everybody is working together as a team to make this project a success.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments?
Thanks, Carl.
Next item.
Well done.
We are on unagenda business.
Let us hear from our unagended speakers.
Mayor, we have several speakers. The first is Dr. Erwin Jackson. He'll be followed by Wilson Barnes.
Erwin Jackson, 1341 Jackson Bluff. On August 21, 2009, I wrote a letter to this commission requesting they return the deferred compensation they gave themselves plus interest. Unfortunately, commissioners have chosen to keep the money in defiance of the public, necessitating the legal actions begin to return, to force return of these monies. This single act of defiance and arrogance motivated me to look at the actions of our city leaders. A few public information requests resulted in a picture of self-serving actions that centered around Mayor Marks and his friends, the usual suspects. City contracts with Honeywell, ADE, KMR, and AT&amp;T have been called into question. During the mayor's nine-year tenure, some commissioners, friends, city employees, and too often, the media simply looked the other way. The usual suspects went along because the money was quick and easy. City contractors, too many felt payments to these usual suspects were needed to keep the city contracts flowing. I recognize that some individuals believe that I have been too direct when pointing out the self-serving actions of our mayor. However, two years of denial and now months of silence, Mr. Marks has failed to mount an argument against the facts I've presented. I'm also aware that my public exposure of Mr. Marks may create embarrassment and disappointment for his wife and son, and for this, I am truly sorry. However, I was simply not willing to follow others who closed their eye in disbelief, were too afraid, or simply not interested to stand up against power and corruption. John Marks' actions should be criticized, not my effort to expose him. A recent decision by city attorney Jim Engle to authorize the hiring of a private investigator to find information that could be used against me is quite disturbing. The Tallahassee Democrat said it very accurately when they concluded that these actions resemble nothing more than abuse of power. Sixty years ago, my teenage job was to clean out the barn. The smell was awful. I did not enjoy the job. I did not want the job, but no one else volunteered. Unfortunately, all these years later, I find myself caught upon again to clean out this other barn we know as City Hall. The Democrat, again, last Sunday, said it best. The time is coming when citizens will have had enough and will demand change, not only in the behavior, but to the people in charge of City Hall. We should, every tenant should pay attention to that. And in conclusion, I think they agree with me. It's time to clean out the barn. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Wilson Baines, followed by Larry Hendricks.
I will repeat again something I've said, and I truly believe, come on up, Mr. Barnes, that Mr. Jackson has a right of free speech guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States, and I will defend his right to free speech. But the fact of the matter is, he does not have a right to be heard under the Con-- I mean, be believed under the Constitution, and I hope the public understands that. The Constitution does not guarantee a right to be believed, and he can come up and say anything he wants to, and he usually does. So, and you know, Winston Churchill once said, "A fanatic is one who can't change his mind and won't change the subject."
Wilson Barnes, 1949, setting sun trail. You notice I've got my Dr. King shirt on. I put this on coming up here tonight because that's the only T-shirt I had that was clean, and I kind of had this one in my closet for a couple of years, and after getting here, I know why I put it on now. It was, Dr. King was reaching out to me to imbue a spirit in me tonight as I talk. First of all, I'm a 30-year regular Army officer, retired from the U.S. Army. Second of all, I'm a 15-year retired marshal of the Florida Supreme Court, and at this particular point in my life, I've got three passions. Making sure that we have a great community, and we do have a great community here in Tallahassee. That's why I retired here after 45 years of service to this country, overseas, Vietnam, the Middle East, Africa, you name it. Another one of my passions is the NAACP, which was one of Dr. King's organizations. A lot of people don't know that. A man who taught only love in the face of enemies. He taught only love when people attacked him verbally, physically, and otherwise. And the third one is, as a veteran, retired Army officer, one of my passions is Iraqi and Afghanistan veterans returning to our community. That's a passion with me. I may as well just tell you, and I probably can get a little extreme, and some of my interests are there. But let me first of all take up the NAACP part of it.
Remind you, we got three minutes.
Three minutes. Okay. The NAACP stands by the statement that we made the last time y'all had a meeting, when our president stood up and said we must have civility in government, in our democracy. We stand by that 110%. I want to make that clear tonight. Secondly, this is kind of a personal opinion, having canvassed everybody, but though I believe everybody in NAACP feels this way who lives in Leon County generally. The Tallahassee city government does a pretty good job, and I saw some numbering system in the paper here in regards to the way y'all rate employees, between four and five. We believe, you're not perfect. Remember, we did battle with you on the biomass plant because we thought that was racial rape. We thought that was environmental racism. You all were after renewable energy, but we worked it out.
You fired.
Okay. Let me just close out then by saying that I want to thank Commissioner Nancy Miller. I want to thank our city manager, Nita Favors Thompson, and Jay Townsend for what they have done here for Iraqi and Afghanistan veterans. I brought it up to them, and I know for a fact that they've got some initiatives trying to get those, get, do better hiring these folks. Also, I know that the transportation initiative for veterans and the fact that you're going to try to facilitate the building clearance for the new Veterans Hospital here in Tallahassee, which is going to be a godsend to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And Mayor, I apologize to you for going over a few seconds and for almost being disruptive in the first part of the meeting.
You don't have to apologize for anything. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Larry Hendricks. He's the last speaker for whom I have a speaker appearance for.
If anybody wants to speak, please fill out a speaker's form. Okay.
Larry Hendricks, 406 Alpha Avenue. I'm sorry I'm late and missed a public comment, in particular, on the rate. I believe that the 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM, 7:00 AM rate unfortunately is balanced on the back of those that need to use their electricity between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. That includes seniors, mothers that are staying home with children. Anybody that is home during those hours will pay a rate higher in order to subsidize the so-called rate savings for those that use it 7:00, whereas the idea is good. It should not be balanced on the backs of those people who are at home during the day. I don't know how you're going to get around that, but businesses also will. I see where you, where there's speak of giving a break to businesses. Well, that also will be balanced on the back of those people that are at home, whether they be disabled, or seniors, or people raising children. And I hope you deal with that. Quite frankly, I would like to know how you're going to restitute the people of this community for the price of the smart meters, which before its overgrowth will be $200 million or the $20 a month savings. It will take somebody all of their life to make that up. I don't believe it'll ever be made up. I would like to see an audit of that. I would like to see an examination of why, how that, why, and how that bid was led without any competition to Honeywell. Speaking to Mr. Jackson, I've, Mr. Jackson runs me wrong lots of times, but I'll have to agree with him, and I wish the mayor would resign and post haste so that we don't have to have a special election to replace him. He speaks of not having to be believed. It'll be fine, except I have not seen any evidence presented by the mayor or in the newspaper or anything that disputes most of the allegations that Mr. Jackson has made. I'd be glad to see that, but it hasn't been forthcoming, and I resent that the mayor has used his position to basically patent his own pocket and those of his compadres. I think it's long past time that the situation was dealt with. I hope you deal with it in a manner that doesn't cost the city of Tallahassee a great deal more money than you have already. Thank you very much.
That's the last speaker.
That's the last speaker. I'm not, okay. Anything further?
Any sharing of ideas?
Yes. Can you say it?
Want to share?
I do. Go ahead. I'm hopeful we can deal with this perhaps now. It would require a vote, but I'm going to throw it out there. If not, we can push it to the next meeting. It has to do with an appointment to the Renaissance Partnership. Right now, the city doesn't, Technology Center, the city does not have any representation on that, and at our Health and Human Services meeting today, we agreed that we probably need to have representation, and we're passing my name forward to be placed on that. Tom, I don't know if you have anything to add. Right now, the board is extremely limited in the number of people that are on it. It is operating out of a house that we have down in Appalachia Ridge. I think we need to have participation on that board, and the board needs to have some direction, and right now, it doesn't. And so, I have volunteered to fill that role and try to hopefully rebuild that board and give more direction to the partnership.
I was on that board for a while, and we survived, we thrived, but circumstances were such that we weren't getting the kind of funding that we used to get in the past from our other partners, and it's kind of has gone down. So, I would support Commissioner Ziffra's effort to get involved in that, and anything I can do to help in that regard, Commissioner Ziffra, please, please do.
Does this require a vote on the part of the commissioner, just an appointment?
I don't think so.
In the past, you all have just designated.
Okay.
Not required. I mean, unless the commissioners have an issue with this, I think it's great that you're doing that, and I appreciate you for doing that because it is a good project, and funding is the problem.
It is. It's, and, okay, thank you.
All right. Anything else you want to share?
Nope.
Well, I had a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank the city manager. I had asked her to put a sign out on Capital Circle marking the animal shelter because the Animal Services Center folks had asked me if I could, the animal, the foundation had asked if we could do that so that it would make it easier for people to get there and adopt animals, and she put it, she made sure that happened, and I appreciate that very much.
We have great staff.
Thank you, staff, for doing so. The other thing is to just impress upon people that really we need to adopt these animals out, and come about a month from now, we're going to get a lot of animals in the shelter because the students will leave, they will just drop their animals off, and it'll be a very sad situation. So, if you're thinking about adopting an animal, please go over and look at some of the adorable animals there. You probably won't be able, we went over there looking for a lost dog and ended up with two cats taking home. So, the final thing I wanted to mention was the, Commissioner Proctor came to visit us, I think our last meeting, and mentioned the maternal-child statistics here in our community, which is absolutely equal to a third-world country. I mean, it's just a frightening thing, and I would like to ask the Health and Human Services Target Issue Committee to take this up. Personally, I believe strongly in the Healthy Start Program, and I would like to have them come in to your Target Issue Committee and present, maybe discuss this with you, to try to figure out if there's any way we can, any way we can help. And that's basically it. I just wanted to mention those two things.
Thank you.
Anything?
I have to mention one thing. One of my, one of the persons that worked for me, Brad Johnson, is in the Tallahassee Young Professionals, and they had their Paceset Awards, I think, a couple of nights ago, and Brad Johnson was selected as the person for the, in the area of political and government association. So, I'm very proud of Brad. He does a wonderful job in my office, and he's just great. So, if you see Brad, I don't, he's not here, is he? He's going home with his baby. He has about a six-month-old baby, so I send him home as soon as he possibly can for that. But I would, if you see Brad, please thank him and congratulate him on a job well done, and he really does get out of nothing and help us a lot. So, thank you very much. If there appears to be nothing else, we stand adjourned.
...an episode right here on WCOOT. For showtimes, visit tau.gov.com.